May we come to order, please? This is the regular monthly meeting of the Garrett Park Town Council. First order of business is approval of the agenda. I will ask for two small edits adding under new business, discussion of the October meeting, and following Council member Deuch's report on renovation, potential council endorsement of timeline for Cambria Ball Field renovation. With those two small edits, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda circulated?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda circulated.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. The consent agenda consists of the approval of the August 11, 2025 Town Council minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any presentations by residents this evening? There being none, we will move to the presentation on renovation cost estimate for the building in which we are sitting. Greg, do you want to start the ball rolling on that, or Gabby?
Yes, Greg is on. Why don't you go ahead? You're comfortable. Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Gregory Weideman of Weideman Architects, and Adam Shirazi is here to present their cost estimate for the design development drawings that were submitted to him on a dated July 29. Adam, I don't know if you want to proceed with going through the cost estimate?
I will share my screen. Okay, is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and start with the cost estimate that was finished on September 4 of this year. I'll just quickly take you through the qualifications and qualifications page.
Adam, I apologize for interrupting. We've got a dog barking right next door. Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
Okay. Can you hear me better? Okay. I'll go through the clarifications and qualifications page. This is just general notes that cover the estimate definitions. You know, they cover our markups at the end of the project, what escalation I'm carrying for the end of the year. These are just, you know, general marks of the estimate. Briefly, I'll just go over the main parts. I'm carrying escalation of 6.5% per year. And this below includes the following markups. I'm carrying 10% overhead and profit, which a typical general contractor would carry on this size project. We're carrying 5% construction contingency on unforeseen conditions, 8% on the design contingency as we progress further to the CD set. This is just something that we're carrying. Market volatility, I've got 5%. Insurance and bonding, we have 2%. And you'll all see this in the next page of the estimate and how these markups are related to the project.
Erin, what are those based on?
These markups are based on just projects we've done in the past. You know, when I look at a project, I look at a project as if I'm the contractor bidding the work. And, for example, these contingencies, you know, these are typical of where we are currently with the construction documents being designed, developed, and set. And then if you allow me to go to the next page, you know, you can see where these markups are added. But before that, these are the exclusions and just items that are not included in the scope of work in this estimate.
Just a definitional question on the second item under exclusions. What is commissioning?
Commissioning is regarding mainly the mechanical system. That is, I guess, permission. That's sort of like a maintenance-related item to the mechanical system. And that's just, you know, typically excluded out of our estimate. If that answers your question.
No.
I'm sorry, is that like putting the mechanical systems into operation? Commissioning them?
It's like basically a third party. Any third-party items are not included in this estimate. The commissioning of the security system, the commissioning of the telecom. Those are like third-party groups that you would contract with. Let's say like you had a contract with whoever's managing the security system of the building. That wouldn't be part of this contract.
Could it be said, I mean, I'm just looking at my world railroad stuff, but could it be said that basically the commissioning is where the parties come in, they verify that the equipment that's installed works correctly, they then maybe do some tests, and then that's followed by instructing, if necessary, anybody on the proper use of the equipment?
Yes, that is correct.
FF and E?
FF and E are, you know, mainly like furniture items.
Ah, alright. Now, we'll have storage expense. Assuming we store everything, would there be any need for phased construction in this project as you see it?
No, nothing is phased here.
There's one, now, fourth up from the bottom, premium costs for out-of-hours labor. Is that... Yeah, go ahead.
That would be additional costs for, let's say, overtime work, weekend work, Sunday work. I don't think this is like a critical schedule or is something like a hospital that needs to be turned over very quickly, accelerated schedule. So that's what we mean by premium cost for out-of-hours labor.
But if the contractor's falling behind on their work output, that wouldn't necessarily be charged to us. That would be the contractor's responsibility. It's only if we ask to have something done faster. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Work on a Sunday.
Right.
Thank you.
Do you keep track of how these budget projections line up with actual bids and contracts on projects you've done in the past?
Yes, what we do is... Yes, so how I, I guess, have the data I have to price these projects is based on prior projects. And how we get that data is we put out an estimate, and then what we do is reconciliation. And then that is the estimated, we have the actual, and then within my database, I make the adjustments to get those cost per square foot or cost per linear foot. Basically, all the line items in my estimate, I constantly adjust based on the times, based on just throughout time. Adjust them based on projects we've completed in the past.
Have you done anything of this scale, a little project like this? This is a little building, you know, an office building.
But there are those who love it.
Have you done any projects that are in the relative size of this project recently?
Yes, I've done a very, a residential project for FEMA within the past, I guess, eight months. You know, stick-built construction, similar roof, similar in terms of size. But as far as the company is concerned, I mean, they've been around for quite some time and they have the data. They've done many projects this size and of projects that are, you know, much larger in scope, like a brand-new hospital or...
You're talking about the general contractor now?
No, no, I'm talking about CCS as a cost consultant, that we've priced projects, reconciled projects, and, you know, we've come within a very good range of what the project actually comes out to be.
What's a very good range?
Within 5%.
Okay. That is a good range.
And myself personally, I've worked as, for 10 years, I owned a drywall and framing company. So I've done a lot of this work myself in a past life as the contractor. So that's where I get my experience and my knowledge from. But the company has done a number of these, you know, size projects as well as much larger. I guess, within the past month, I've done a project that was for $50 million. That was for, you know, large chiller for a university. So we kind of do all sizes.
Thank you.
Okay, I will proceed to the project recap summary. So basically, this basically outlines the whole project. Typically, in construction, we use the CSI codes. And the CSI codes are basically the classifications of construction. For example, Division 1 is your general requirements. This would carry, I guess, the direct overhead cost of the project by the general contractor. And for example, Division 4, that's where I would carry all the costs associated with masonry. You know, Division 22, that's where I would carry all the items related to plumbing. Basically, all the direct costs are on the left side of the column. And when I spoke to you about the markups that I carried, the contingencies, the overhead and profit, these are all applied after the direct costs. And this is where we come to the total cost of almost $2.8 million, $2,796,95... Do you guys, do you have any questions regarding this page?
The square foot, $1,139, is that based on the total, including markups?
Yes, that is.
Do you sit down with the general contractors to review the bids that you get and do value engineering during that process as part of your services?
Yes, we provide that service. As far as where we are currently, we've just provided an estimate based on our data and what we see the project value is looking like. But we do do those services. Yes.
Would cost-saving alternatives be part of that, too? Part of that analysis, that could be?
Yes, we can provide value engineering. We can look at certain items, certain scopes, and provide alternative materials or alternative methods to do that. But that would be another service.
Once you get the bids from general contractors, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Should I continue to the next, I guess, through the details of the estimate?
Sure.
Okay, over here, we have the Division 1 general requirements portion of this project. I've put together line items that apply specifically to this project. For example, there's a site superintendent. We're assuming that this is 10 months to complete. And we're carrying this cost for each month. This includes the salary, the insurance, the benefits, the entire cost of the superintendent. And then, you know, it's multiplied in 10 months to carry his cost. And over here, we have the total for the general requirements of $217,000. If you have any questions regarding any of the line items there, just let me know. You know, the other items that are covered, for example, dumpsters. We're figuring 10 months of dumpsters to throw away any trash, things like that. There's a site fence. There's, you know, everything that the general contractor may need, like a site vehicle, small tools. These are all costs associated with general requirements. And if you don't have any questions, I'll continue to the next Division 2. So Division 2 here, we have existing conditions. And specifically, it relates mainly to demolition. As you can see here, I've covered interior demolition. I covered things on the exterior. One of the larger costs on the Division 2 existing conditions would be basically preparing for the new foundations. Underneath the building, there needs to be some shoring installed, temporary shoring in place to basically remove a layer of dirt and then also replace some foundations. So I have here all the associated costs with that scope of work. If you need, I guess, further detail, I can point these out on plans. But basically, this is mainly in regards to the demolition scope of work. And I'll continue to the next section because it's...
Before we leave that page, page 6, the next-to-last entry is hazmat demolition. And if you go to page 31, the exact same elements and the exact same amount are shown as an alternate deduction. Does that imply that we have a choice? Or that in the event, we may find that there is no asbestos and lead paint and therefore, this could be deducted because it doesn't have to be done?
Yes, I would say that first reason you just explained, if there wasn't asbestos in environmental report, then yes, we could delete those items. I'm not aware of any environmental report yet or any list of testing or whatnot of any material inside the existing space. So that's number one, so that you can, you know, just remove it as part of the construction cost. Another way this could be of use is if is if you would prefer to contract directly with the hazmat demolition company. And that way, you would kind of save on a markup. Basically, a lot of projects that I've worked on in the past, sometimes it makes more financial sense. In this case, it's not that big, but it's still a savings. If you would contract directly with an asbestos removal company, have them complete the work, and then that way, you're not paying the overhead of the general contractor, any markups on top of that. So, for example... Yes, so I said that that is the first reason. And the second reason would be just in case you want to contract directly with the removal company, because I've seen that in the past, that sometimes they have someone go remove the asbestos and then you can go ahead, proceed with the general contractor doing the project. And as you can see, it's... There's a markup associated with that cost. So that's just there. If you wanted to delete it out of the estimate, you have that option.
Alright. I guess I didn't frame my question well. Do we have a choice on this? Is it elective whether we remove hazmat materials?
Currently, I'm just carrying this as an allowance, as in, there could possibly be asbestos because of the age of the building. So that's just something to cover the cost as unforeseen. But I have not seen an environmental test conducted yet to say there's asbestos in the tile or asbestos in the walls. I'm just assuming that there may be asbestos on the project because of the age of the building. But we don't have anything defined yet.
But if there is asbestos, it has to be removed.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah. Do, when we talk about asbestos, I mean, we know that the drywall is pre-1970, give or take, and that would mean that there's a high likelihood of having asbestos. Is special handling required when they go to remove that drywall as part of the demolition?
So basically, to confirm everything, you would need to do an environmental report. And with that environmental report, they would basically test every single, I guess, item that looks to be asbestos-containing material. Is this done by like an engineering company? And let's say the asbestos was only in a vestibule area or some small area, I believe in Montgomery County, that after a certain square footage, you need to have someone that is licensed to do that work if it grows beyond, I guess, a certain area. But right now in the estimate, I've just put a number that I felt comfortable with to carry a cost just in case there is asbestos.
Excuse me, as a public building, it must be free of asbestos.
Right.
Yes, I think probably the next step of actually knowing if there's asbestos or not would be to get that environmental test.
And I think we did one for Yandell, right? Yeah. Been down that road.
Just show it to the county before you go to Yandell.
Right.
So, okay. So, as I mentioned, this is an allowance. So I'm, you know, I'm looking at the project, looking at the age of the building, and I'm saying, you know, I think $15,000 should cover if there's any asbestos in the floor or any in the walls or ceilings. I believe that $15,000 should cover it. We also have, you know, additional monies in the contingencies, the markups I discussed earlier, that also provide a little bit of padding at this stage. So at this stage, we're at the DD set. I mean, there are still items to define. But at this stage, I believe we're well-covered when it comes to any asbestos or any lead paint in the building. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Now to the next page, demolition. Basically, this is all plumbing. This is all mechanical demolition, HVAC. And the total existing conditions demolition comes out to $126,000. And moving on to concrete, this is mainly related to the foundations. This is related to the addition specifically as well. And I've broken out which items are in the existing building and which items are in the addition. So for the addition, following the drawings, we've picked up, you know, continuous footings. We've got the linear footage. I'm using a cost per linear foot, which is actually pulled from a cost per cubic yard that I have in my database for this type of continuous footing reinforced. So moving on to something that could be very similar to the continuous footing, this would be this honched, benched foundation. And put together the size. Again, this is also calculated by a cubic yardage that I have historical data on based on the size of this, and it's reinforced as well.
Adam?
Yes.
When you're coming up with these, is there anything about this building in particular or the historic nature of this building that factors in to these estimates? Or is it
Yes.
really sort of your experience and going rates and all of that?
It's exactly what you said, the going rates, the current market rates, production rates. Sometimes I do factor in a couple items. For example, and it's more of an example in demolition, for example, the existing building, underneath the building, they have to remove a section of, excavate, I guess, a good nine to 10 inches of dirt in order to achieve the elevation. And that's all hand-dug. You can't really bring a machine underneath the building.
Right.
So that's all done by hand, and I factored in the risks. I factored in the temporary shoring that's required and all those necessary steps specific to this job. As for the foundations, I don't see them as difficult. I do see some work being a little bit slightly difficult underneath the existing building, and I factor for that as well. Then on to the next page. As far as concrete goes, you know, at this stage, we don't have the... Uh, you know, at this stage, we don't have the, the detail uh for the stairs. Um, both on the west, the north side, and then also the ramp stair and landing uh for the northeast entry, and I've put together just um uh allowances for where I believe the, you know, the cost would end up uh end up at um, just from, you know, prior, prior projects I've, I've worked on. Um, uh, as for the slab on grade, uh, there is a two inch uh mud slab over um uh underneath the building at the crawl space. This is also another uh more difficult, uh, I guess, activity to do because it's under the building. Um, so you need a pump, and uh you'd have guys working, I guess, kind of hunched. Uh, you know, pulling and spreading the concrete. Uh, do you have any questions uh regarding the, the concrete package? I guess I'll, I'll continue to uh Division Four Masonry. Um, uh, basically, the, the masonry covers uh the new foundation wall. Um, and this new foundation wall is, is for the new addition and also for areas where there's missing, um. I guess it's reflected in the structural drawings that are missing. Here, let me see if I can pull it up.
If I can interject, in the drawings from nineteen ninety-nine, there are some areas where it looks like there isn't a foundation wall, where we think there may be. And so because of that, um, he's allowing this number, cuz we're not sure exactly what's there. And, I guess he's, yeah, he'll show it.
This would also include the building of the, of the wall after we take out the bathrooms here. We gotta basically build a new wall where the crawl space used to be.
That's right. There's gonna be, oh, here, he can pull it up, um.
So these would be these walls right here. So I created uh an allowance for this. Um, of course, they have to verify in the field if there's actually a foundation or not, and this one as well, right here.
Yeah.
It, it might be there because it's supporting the addition right now. So it'd be surprising if there isn't um a foundation wall, but since the nineteen ninety-nine drawings didn't show them, we're not sure.
Right.
And the foundations are the, what I guess laymen would call center block, right? Not, not poured concrete in form.
Yes, they, they're twelve inch CMU.
Yeah.
And, and also grouted and reinforced, so that's uh, that's covered under, under masonry. Um, within Division Five, uh, based on this, based on where we are in the with the current set, uh, this is a design development set, so um, I've put together an allowance just to cover any miscellaneous metals. Um, you know, any additional steel that would be required. Um, and I thought sixty-five hundred would, would definitely cover that, so I added that. Uh, which is a very small number in this project. Um, and then when it comes to uh Division Six, the rough carpentry package, uh, basically, I've priced all the items that are seen uh in the structural set of drawings. So for example, um, you know, your two by twelves, um, uh, the ledger boards, um, we have some LVL uh framing members as well. Uh, these are all covered. These are all covered in, in the estimate uh by linear footage. And then, of course, I have my price per linear footage, which includes the material as well as the labor to install it. Um, and then a couple additional items that were not shown in the drawings uh were the attachments. Let's say your Simpson joist hangers. Um, those things, I've, I've put together an allowance um just to cover those as well. So, um, basically, I've broken out by area. You know, first floor framing, this is for the addition on the first floor. And then, for example, first floor existing building, there's no work shown. I've added a hatch uh to the crawl space. Uh, I've made an allowance to repair anything that needs to be repaired. Um, uh, based on the size. And then just continuing on from their second floor addition, attic framing addition, uh, the existing building. And anywhere that I, because we're at the DD set where it may not be fully uh designed, um, any, any items that we may have some scope gap, I've, I've put in additional monies and additional scope. Um, you know, to cover those items, if, if that makes sense.
Excuse me, Adam, on the previous page for metals, um, the miscellaneous metal allowance, what does that include? Cuz it, it's not the connections, right? Cuz those are in, in the wood area. And it's not the stair railings, correct? Cuz that's in another division.
Yes, uh, so this would be, if there was any added steel. Excuse me. For example, um, let's say there was a, in the future, there were to be an I-beam added to the project. Um, let's say additional lintels, uh, this sixty-five hundred dollars should cover that. Um, and this is just, as, as you can see in the, in the drawings. Um, you know, this is a, like a fifty-five to seventy percent uh, you know, set. So, I guess during, when you receive the hundred percent set, there would be more, I guess, more defined items. So basically, I'm just trying to foresee it before it happens. We may use it, we may not, we may not use it, just depending on the, you know, when we get to the construction documents, when they're fully complete. Um, there could be some miscellaneous metals, for example, in this uh, in this awning. Um, so, uh, that, that's where I've, I've added, uh, I've allocated some money in there, just in case when uh the drawings are complete, then, you know, we have some money to, to pull from. Um, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, so I, I went through the structural drawings, any scope gaps that I found. You know, I, I put together a number. Um, if items weren't, I guess, well-defined, you know, I, I assumed a full cost as I have here with some lump sum pricing. Um, the metal connections as I, as I've mentioned, um, and things of that nature, allowances to repair, because when you remove this floor, there may be some lumber that, that night, that needs to be repaired, removed, um, and, and so on. Um, now, that is the rough, um, the rough carpentry uh scope of work. And then I also have finished carpentry. Um, and finished car- carpentry is all the carpentry that you can actually see and appreciate, which is your kitchen. Um, so I've, I've covered a cost for the kitchen, I've covered a cost for the countertops, uh, the storage area shelving, um, the rear hall, there's some base uh, uh, base cabinets and countertop. Um, and then I pulled the, the countertop from a from basically the um, the allowances portion of the specifications, and basically followed that. And as I mentioned, this is a fifty-five to seventy percent DD set. So, it's not fully defined. So, um, you know, we're, we're just putting some, allocating some money to cover whatever that future item is gonna be picked out to be. Um, and in this case, uh, we're covering a hundred dollars a square foot uh for the countertops. And then, as you can see, for, for each area, I've allocated a lump sum amount that I believe the millwork is gonna be priced. Um, and then, uh, one of the larger items I have in here is the interior millwork, the trims, the window sills. Uh, these are items that may not have uh detailed drawings associated with. And um, you know, based on the type of windows, uh, Marvin windows, I've, I've come up with a, with a price for the sills uh for additional trims. Um, and I've plugged that in as, as twenty thousand dollars. And then all of this entire carpentry package just priced at two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars um, in, in that range. Uh, so.
Just, just to give us a notion of what one hundred dollars a square foot for countertops is, what, what is the range there, say, between formica and quartz?
Um, I, I would look at it this way, on a, on a lower scale. I mean, uh, for mica, you can get to like a seventy-five dollars or less a square foot um, to your granites, which, which can, you know, get to probably in the a hundred seventy-five, two hundred dollars a square foot range. Um, I mean, things definitely vary based on, based on material. I've kind of picked a center ground, I think more of like a corian. And uh, I believe, uh, that's what's put together in the allowances. Um, I don't know if it's specifically set corian, but uh, based on the price, I think that's what it's, what it's looking to be.
You have metal roof in some of these plans in these prices.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah, that, that, that was the, that was the previous category.
No, it shouldn't be, right?
He does have it for the roof coverings. Yeah. But we don't, I mean, that's the kind of thing that we may decide not to do. I mean, it's a lot more expensive than just asphalt or shingles.
Three small ones.
Yeah.
Oh, I think the only, the only standing seam roofs we were calling for were the um, over the doorway, yeah.
Yep.
Very small.
Uh, going back to the kitchen area or the, the interior carpentry, I, I thought forty-five thousand sounded rather high for the kitchen cabinetry, given that it's a fairly small space and um, i- is that because we are thinking of using that space for more um, town's storage purposes than we did in the past? I was just trying to understand.
Um, we provided some basic interior elevations of the kitchen that they, um, I'm assuming, Adam, that's what you went off of.
Yes. I, I use that. Um, uh, also, just to mention, I tried to be a little bit more conservative in my pricing. Um, especially at the DD level, we wanna be a little bit more conservative. And then at the construction development drawing stage, a lot of numbers sometimes tend to fall, and then the contingencies fall because we have a more defined set of drawings. Um, but uh, as far as the kitchen goes, yes, we're, we're priced a little bit on the high side. Um, but that's, you know, just the way I see things is just to be as conservative as possible, because it's easier to go down than it is to go up. Um, and, and this anticipates any other changes that may be done in the kitchen um, on the CD set, so if there's any additional items that, that are added, um, you know, this gives a little, a bit more of a cushion, um, you know, to go against, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I've got a question with regard to storage area one twelve. Uh, I know where the shallow shelves are, but there's a rod and shelf at storage, and I thought we did that as cabinets. Cabinets and countertop. No, while the closet was supposed to be pantry, but when I looked at the elevation views,
Yeah.
Especially the detail view, I saw that it was a uh, all the way out to the end, like the very end, and you'll see the detail keep going.
Yeah, it should be ju, it should be just shelving.
It should be cabinets, right?
There's cabinets on one side,
Right.
Base cabinets and wall cabinets, and then on the opposite side, there's a closet with um, shell, with shelving.
Right, so I'm wondering whether or not the base and wall cabinets plus the countertop for the, um, he's got it up on the screen right now. If that's been accounted for, because it shows like a closet and rod, almost as if it were a standard hallway closet in a house. You know what I mean?
We were previously showing a rod where it says pantry shelves.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
But because of that duct, we, we, we couldn't have it be a deep closet.
Right.
But on the opposite end, the wall and base cabinets were always shown there.
And is that what was included in the uh estimate then?
Yes, um, I, I think if it was just a uh, eh, just a rod, I think it would be a lot less than what we have it.
Okay, just wanna be sure, thanks.
So I, I, so we definitely have room in there for the cabinet and the, the countertop, and it's, it's priced accordingly for that. And moving on to uh the roof coverings, um, it basically covered uh the architectural shingles. We've got uh number thirty felt underneath that as the assembly. Um, per the drawings, I've carried a ice and water shield um on the perimeter. Uh, I guess the, the roof eve uh carries that, just additional uh, to protect against, um, you know, moisture. Uh, and then we do have a cementa shingles, and this is at the, the roof gable. Um, and that also has the, the felt and the ice and water shield. Um, and then, of course, I've carried the soffits. I don't believe there's a detail for the soffit, but I, I have my own assembly uh made, you know, based on these uh residential plan, and then that's how I've come up with the, with the price. Um, for, for the main roof. Um, and then, of course, I guess you were, were talking about uh the standing seam metal roof. Um, yes, there's a premium uh for a standing seam metal roof, and yes, there's a even higher premium uh when it comes to copper. And um, I, I'm sure you've been keeping up with the news that uh there's been a lot of fluctuation with, with metals, and I've seen this on many projects. I mean, fortunately, this project is not so large in, in, in size. But um, I think over the past month, there's been a day or two or so that uh the price of copper has just skyrocketed and then has come down, uh, you know. Uh, but that definitely drives projects higher. Um, and when you spoke about value engineering, uh, I guess this would be one of the items I would, you know, bring up is the, the cost of a copper standing seam metal roof, and it's pretty pricey for what the size is.
Correct.
Um, Gabby, is there likely any requirement from the Historic Preservation Commission standpoint that we go with copper versus turn or something of that nature?
I don't think so. There weren't any comments
Okay.
To that.
How about the next category, aluminum gutters? Are they gonna permit those on this older portion of the building? Copper.
Yeah, copper.
Copper, half, half round. It, it's as much, the profile as much as the material. Is that right?
Sorry.
Is it the profile or the material or both?
The profile is a half round,
Yeah.
Is what we found um on the old historic photos. You currently have an OG profile.
Yeah.
Um, but we thought it would be good to go back with the half round. Um, the aluminum is not an issue. I mean, it could be, yeah.
Okay.
That's not a good.
Okay, but that, this, and this next one, I think, gets to Chris Deitch's question, that the, the wood siding for the existing building is, is that estimate based on um, siding that we can easily replicate the current profile? Because I think we're gonna be required to for any replacement siding on the existing building.
Adam, um, what is this number?
Uh, this is uh assuming uh what Uh, this is uh, assuming uh, what was shown in the specifications is the lap siding. Um, so I've, I've covered that uh, cost uh, based on the specification. Um, but as far as matching any siding. Uh, I think you can definitely find someone from uh, one of these um, I guess lumber yards. And I think I've seen it before where they can sort of match the profiles of any siding if it's like historical. And one, you know, pretty reputable company would be maybe TW Perry. I think they could. Uh, i- if it's regarding something historic to, to really match what's existing. Uh, but as far as the estimate, I'm just covering uh, the, the item that was shown in, in the specs. Uh, described as the lap uh, siding. Um, and then I've got the cost of nine sixty-eight, which is a pretty conservative number uh, for the, for the siding cost on this one. Keep, keeping the, keeping in mind of the historic, um, you know, this being a historic building.
Was that using the specified wood and replacing all of the siding?
Yes, um, in the drawings, it actually showed to replace as needed. Um, but then I got further direction of replacing all the existing siding. And um, I've covered that entire square footage and uh, and I don't. Um, have off the top of my head the exact type of wood, but um, it is definitely covered in my cost per square foot.
That's. How do you pronounce that word?
Last, I'm sorry?
The sapile wood?
Sapula?
Sapile, there we go.
Um, the lap siding that's currently there, it doesn't have an unusual profile.
Right.
Um, it's, it's pretty standard, should, so it can easily be matched. And that's what we've called in for to replace, to match existing.
Would you, Jerry, you had a question?
It's okay, no.
Hey, um, moving to the next page. Um, I've covered here the cementous uh, siding uh, with the weather barrier. And uh, this is just for the, for the addition. Um, and I've covered that square footage, the cost associated with that uh, siding. Um, and then I've picked up uh, exterior trims. And this will be throughout the building, not just uh, uh, the addition or the existing building. This is covering. Um. The entire scope. Um, I've uh, quantified PVC trim boards. Um, and then I put together a couple allowances based on the level of detail. Um, we don't have uh, specific details on, you know, certain patterns and, and things like that. Um, and I have uh, accounted for that. And then hopefully by the CD set that, you know, it's something within range of, of what I, what I carried for the um. Uh, for the allowances. Um, so this is just as, as drawings develop, you know, we'll actually get the exact trim profiles of the windows. Um, and then we have that cost covered uh, here in total. Um. And then moving on within division seven is your insulation and waterproofing.
Excuse me, Adam. Sorry, could I interrupt Adam? Sorry, I'm getting a text, uh, cause Greg is only able to hear, but he can't, so he sent me a message. Just in regards to the siding, he says usually the nominal, nominal charge for a knife. For the siding is five hundred dollars than the material cost. So if, if, if we needed a custom knife, you know.
Yeah, I think we had to have a custom, custom blade for, pin place, I don't remember.
He, um, since I wanted to go back, I was looking at the specification and I guess it was covered under seven. Uh, point oh eight oh metal gutters and downspouts and it calls up for a freedom gray copper. So I'm wondering, did we make the change to aluminum? Um. Or do we need to update this, the design spec? You see what I mean?
Where is that, sorry?
So it's on page seventeen.
On seventeen.
And it's seven point oh eight oh. And if you look at the first. Uh. If you look at the first sentence there, main roof, provide and install freedom gray copper half round.
Seven or seventeen?
It's page seventeen and it's um, division seven, zero point eight oh.
But it, it's not seventeen of, of the estimate.
You're, no, no, I'm talking about in the, in the design spec.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Now I understand why I couldn't.
I'm actually not familiar with freedom gray copper, but I'm assuming um, oh, that we corrected that to aluminum.
Oh, okay, so there's an updated version.
Yeah, because we were showing, I think I, we were showing in the drawings aluminum. But the spec called out copper, so we clarified that with Adam. And, and he did price aluminum.
Good.
Okay, good.
Um, on to uh, insulation and waterproofing. Um. Just. Just based off of some standards that I'm now seeing, um, I also priced in a basement liner. Um. This is just basically to uh, you know. lessen moisture within the crawl space and really protect the framing. Um, so I, I just added that and we, we put that in as an add alternate. So the price is not showing up above, but um, if you go to the add alternates. Which is. I have the basement liner here for twenty-one thousand dollars. And that's a mix of the liner and of course, uh, uh, an insulate, uh, an insulation as well that comes with the liner. Um, so this is an add alternate. It's not shown in the drawings, but just based off of. Some projects I've seen in the past that they carried a liner in the crawl space. Just to uh, keep the framing, you know, moist and, you know, away from contact from the ground or anything. Um, so that uh, that cost has been, been added, but as an add alternate, so it's not in the scope.
But that would, that would assist with um, reducing moisture or helping to mitigate moisture in the crawl spaces, right?
Yes, that's just the suggestion I made when, when I saw the crawl space.
Good.
Um, I'm carrying uh, insulation at the roof. Uh, at the walls, uh, we even have below grade insulation uh, towards this. Towards the crawl space, we've added that as well. Uh, foundation drain, you know, your French, uh, French drain assembly with the gravel and the pipe. Um, just to bring water away from the building. And then I've carried just a miscellaneous insulation caulking and waterproofing allowance, um, just to cover. Uh, any new additions uh, in the, in the drawings. And as I mentioned, there's a DD set, so in the CD set, if there are more items. Um, this is something that could possibly cover those items or, you know, be greater than. And in total, we have a hundred and seventy-nine thousand uh, for the roof. And um, there's definitely some room here for VE, if any, when it comes to the standing seam, um, copper roof. Uh, so maybe to keep that as a note for future purposes as, as we price the, the project. Um, on to the next page, which is openings. Um. So basically here, we have the quote provided by Forbes Design Center and this is for Marvin exterior windows and doors. These are materials only. And this was a, a, a quote that we, we received. I plugged this number in uh, from the proposal. And uh, I believe it did not have the hardware, so I added uh. Uh, some costs in for hardware as well. Uh, and then of course, these installation items are just the installation of the items above. So these are the material costs and these would be the labor costs associated with all the exterior windows, exterior doors. And um, the cost associated by, by each. So I have these items in here. Um, the existing windows, we had an allowance to repair and installation of the storm panel. So I counted twelve windows and we have uh, a cost to, to cover that. Um, we did have also a quote for interior doors, which were the materials only at, at this sum. Um, also did not include the hardware, so I've, I've added um. Added the hardware and then I've also added the installation of the interior doors as well. And that's how we've come to, to this cost. Um, just looking at the, the exterior windows and doors, I mean, these are uh, higher end items. Um, another area where you could possibly look at uh, you know, value engineering, maybe to a different uh, uh. A different manufacturer of doors and windows. Um, maybe we could find some savings there in the future if necessary. Um. And then moving on to uh, finishes. Um, basically all the interiors, your drywall, uh, your flooring. Um, I've covered all the assemblies, I've covered the ceilings. I've covered any repairs to the existing ceilings, because we do have existing ceilings in the uh, in the existing building. Um, we've covered uh, luxury vinyl floor tile. Um. Uh, we carried an allowance for the material, we've carried a price for the, for the labor. Um, we've even carried an allowance for any subfloor repairs in the existing uh, building. And um, moving to wall finishes, we've picked up wall tile, uh, tile backsplash. Uh, interior painting and then of course, uh, interior painting of uh, of the millwork. So we have that as well. Um, and then picking up exterior uh, exterior paint and then also the exterior paint when it comes to trims. Um, and if you add all the finishes together, we've got a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Um, in total. That's the interiors.
Question on interior. Quick question on interior, did you make any allowance for uh, refinishing the floor in the main hall?
Right here?
Uh. Go ahead, I'm, I'm, I, did someone say something?
Oh, she, Lisa just asked if it was right here and the, the answer was yes, the room we're sitting in currently.
Okay, I, I believe on the drawings, it called for luxury vinyl tile. So I've covered that with luxury vinyl tile. If that needs to be changed, I can, I can definitely make that change. Um.
I'm sorry, Adam, the luxury vinyl tile is for the addition only?
Yeah, right.
So we were calling for um, the wood floor here in the main hall.
Correct.
It has to be.
Okay.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you have your antique pine floor to match existing.
Is, so is that replacing or?
Uh, that was in a, in a small area, I believe, and it's carrying such a small number that I think I would have to revise that. Uh, I think majority of the square footage.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I would actually have.
Well, there's also carpet, um. I guess the question is, um, I believe there's wood floor underneath this.
Yes, yes.
So it's to repair the entire floor.
Right, but it's not a small area, that's what.
But what about the refinishing? In other words, when we repair it, I'm thinking. I know, well, I know there are people who would want to use this as a dance floor, so. They may want to have, you know, something in decent shape. And I'm asking, are we planning on refinishing it? And by the way, this is uh, one oh three. So it's the one right where I got your cursor, yeah. Um. So are we going to refinish the strip and refinish this floor?
Yes.
Okay, great. Or, yeah, whatever, so. But is that included in the uh, estimate?
No, it's, it's not included in the estimate. I, and I just know. Because I, I put these line items together that it's not in there. Um, I think it's covered with, with the LVT. Um, or the carpet. Uh, I'll just have to go back and, and adjust that and I can make that in my notes and, and. And definitely make that uh, make that change, but great catch. I didn't see that. Um, so I can, I can go ahead after this meeting and, and adjust uh, for, for sanding the existing floor as well. Um, any other questions regarding uh, finishes?
I believe we're also calling out for wood floor, um, this little area here that's going to be open.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's currently, I think, just like a painted floor in there.
It, it's a, it's a new floor, um, new wood floor where? Which room?
So next to the stage. Um, let's see, it's a store, a side hall. Right in there. Since it's going to be open to the parlor.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We had called out for a wood floor there to match existing.
Okay. I, I can make a note as that, uh, for that as well.
The stage. Not just in there, the whole stage too.
Um.
Stage is wood floor, correct?
I don't know.
And that, that's not, we haven't gotten that level of detail.
We didn't include that as um, part of the scope for replacing that wood floor. I think we had only assumed.
Right.
In here and in that side hall.
So what's on the stage?
I'm actually not sure. Um, I don't know if George has looked in there. Yeah.
I think it should all match.
I guess the question is, are you gonna go back to carpeting? Cause the parlor is entirely carpeted, right?
Correct, it is now, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought the intention was all wood floor. It would throughout. Good, but I don't know what's underneath there and that was actually a question I was gonna ask.
I know there's um, wood floor in the parlor, because I was here with George and he lifted up a corner.
And it was at the heart of pine type, like this one?
Yeah, match this one.
What about on the stage?
We didn't check the stage, um. But that's a question of whether you want it to be.
Yeah.
I would.
Exposed.
I would have it as exposed and we can always put an area rug down, but uh, there's other people.
I mean, we don't know the condition of the existing wood floor. Um, until it completely.
The stage, the stage has a hatch in it for the baptismal font. So it's not an uninterrupted surface.
I see.
I don't know what was done when it was carpeted over. Is this the level of detail we need to assess? The order of magnitude accuracy of the estimate?
No, probably.
It's, it's very padded, but you know, as he said, it's easier to take.
Well, it, it, it may be padded in parts, it may be low in parts. And those discreet decisions are the kind that I think are probably made. Or the decisions that influence whether a given estimate is high or low may be the kind that we really. Don't want to make as a committee of a whole.
I think that's fair.
Um, so perhaps we could resume and finish the categories of estimates. Um. In a, in a more sort of summary fashion.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll move a lot quicker, but uh, just going off your. Uh, I guess the comment on um, on, on padding this. Uh, and yes, this is a DD set, we're moving to the CD set. There are some details. That are missing in between until we, you know, uh, finish that progress. Um, we have a design contingency of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, ninety-eight thousand here for construction contingency, so that's. You know, if, if there are items missing like flooring or, or, or certain items here and there that are in structural that. You know, get updated as we go, uh, that, that definitely would be covered and I feel very comfortable. Uh, with the number that we have, but continuing on. Um.
Um, excuse me, sorry, um, Greg is saying, suggesting that maybe Adam could provide um. Costs for full replacement, if that's what the town wants.
Yes, I, I.
Well, if we, if we did get a cost for the full replacement, I suspect what we'd end up with is something in between. Because I think the general consensus is that this floor has bad spots in the middle. And some of the elements of correcting that are anticipated here, new subfloor support. Uh, and. Uh, and patching. Question is whether that would be sufficient and if it were. What's clearly missing is a complete refinishing. But that's the kind of detail, I wonder if we really need to assess this overall estimate, you know?
Hey, Adam, can I, can I ask a question, please? On, and this is more of a general question, I. On the project recap and summary page. Um, I I really appreciate your level of detail going going into um, kind of a format that you put together, but on the project. Recap and summary phase. And again, I I I fully understand that, you know, a lot of, a lot of this, a lot of the great work was done before. The the most recent elections in May, but. I just wanna make sure that I'm looking at this correctly, you know, you know, the the slide that I'm referring to, the the uh, the first one, the project recap. The, as I'm looking through this, uh, the. You know, I'm looking at some of the major items, you know, the openings, the finishes, the plumbing. And.
Jonathan, the town council?
Yeah, John Stroud.
Yeah.
Sorry, tough to be remote. Adam, I just, you know, more than anything, and I, you know, as you're. And the work of, you know, that you've done with with other clients, not just the town, on the cost management side, I'm. I'm looking, if I'm looking at this correctly. You know, the. The difference, the delta, and I know these, some of these are are estimates between the direct costs and then the markups. I'm looking at about a forty one percent markup. Which I think the back, my back of the napkin was about seven hundred and thirty five thousand. Uh, in markups. And I was just curious, as we're going through the, you know, the more detailed aspects. I wanted to make sure that I was looking at this correctly, is that, is that forty one percent? Markup, i- is that kind of consistent with this type of? Design in in the work that you've done for for someone who is much less seasoned. Um, on this work. That that did just jump out at me and I I wanted to make sure that I was looking at that correctly, is that seven hundred and thirty five thousand in markups, is that? Is that, am I looking at that the right way?
Um, I would say. It depends how you look at the markups. We're carrying some items as construction contingency, design contingency to capture any. I guess scope changes in the work. Just be, this being like a not complete set of drawings. Um, but in terms of markup of the, the general contractor, insurance. It it's just the way you look at these items. Um, in total, yes, if if you add 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 up all of these together. It uh, it does come out to be the forty percent markup, but a lot of it is just. I guess placeholders to add into. You know, covering the project and making sure that there, that there is, you know. Money covering the anticipated. Uh, finishing up the drawings, if you get what I'm saying, or any loose ends that are not defined.
No, no, I, and and I appreciate that distinction, Adam, I, but I think the placeholders that we have in there are a reasonable. Assessment of where we may. You know, we may not, but where we may end up, right? Those are, that's a reasonable assessment of of where we are now, correct?
Yes, yes, this is, this is a, this is very padded. Um, and and I'll just tell you this, with residential, there's. Uh, I would say a a larger range when it comes to buying out the project. With 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 commercial work, it's. You would find the bidders closer together. Um, I wanted to come from a more conservative approach, depending on what type of general contractor you end up getting. Um, the range in residential is a lot larger than when it comes to, and this. This being like a residential type building, wood construction, stick built. You know, you have your your higher end general contractors and then you have. You know, some of the more competitive guys, so I wanted to capture everything, and yes, you're right, this. This does have a, I guess, a higher margin. Um, you know, to kind of cover those items. And it all depends, if if you want it to be a a lot more, uh, a lot less conservative and and I can, I can do that. Um, at the end of the, at the end of the day, it just kind of depends also, you know, what. What general contractors you have looking at at this project. Um, but yes, this would be on the more conservative end, and I like to price things more conservatively, because. You know, it it's easier to go down than it is to to add more money to the project. But uh, but you're right, um, there is a lot of room to to squeeze. And and to cut down on, um, at at the D D stage, I like to have a little bit more. Uh, but you know, that's just my my preference, but uh, you know, if you. If you ask me to to cut this project down a little bit, uh, reasonably, I I could definitely do so, yes.
I understood, you know, obviously, I think everyone in this room certainly would would like to see the, you know, a compression, that would, that would. Obviously, as stewards of the, of the town's money, we'd we'd like to see that, but I also understand the way that you've, and very much appreciate, Adam, the way that you've approached. This exercise, so thank you for for taking a minute to to walk me through, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Adam, just to piggyback on that, and um. Does the, does the fact that this is a. Commercial or I guess public property versus residential property? I get what you're saying about um. The fluctuations, but just in terms of. Costs. Does that, does that? Increase the cost significantly? I mean, it must, right? But the ca- the cost of these line items or overall?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 spec and requirements for commercial.
Are stricter.
Or is higher and more expensive than residential.
Yeah.
You know, i- if you kind of look at it this way, you know, let's say, uh, residential work. Let let's say you were to build a deck at the back of your house. You may end up getting ranges between companies, like, for example, you might. Get one company that prices it at twenty five thousand dollars to build the same deck as a company that would build it for. For twelve or ten thousand. In commercial, that range is a little bit less, in residential, you tend to see it a little bit more, there are just. Some guys that that are, you know, on the higher side of things, and then there are some that are, you know, uh. Uh, that charge a lot less, um, and you see that more in residential, that big gap. Um, in commercial, I don't really see that, I see the bidders usually close together. Um, so I'm I'm just uh being a little bit conservative. Um, you know, to cover that if if you're going with a more higher end. You know, general contractor, or if if only those types of contractors end up bidding this project. But uh, but if if you need this to be, um, I guess. Tightened up, I I can definitely, um, I can definitely do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think conservative is is a good thing here. Thanks, Adam.
Um, going back to division nine. I think uh, we've covered that, I'll make some edits regarding the the flooring. I can, I can make those changes, and then I guess I'll get the decisions on the stage and I guess that one corner pocket. Next to the stage. If that can be changed to wood flooring or if it can be sanded. Um, if you could let me know, that would be great. Um, moving to uh, division ten. Uh, specialties which cover uh toilet accessories, signage, and um. Uh, your other specialties, uh, basically, uh, in the bathrooms, they're. You know, I've I've put together pricing for all the toilet accessories, which is your, your mirror, your um. I guess tissue paper, roll dispenser. Uh, your uh soap dispenser, uh, things of that nature, I've put together in here, this is the labor and the materials. Um, and then we get into the interior signage, I've I've put an allowance together. Um, the exterior signage, I just made this a note to uh, existing to remain, that we're not touching the exterior signage. Um, and then I believe I added uh, two fire extinguisher cabinets. Um, and then I was told to put a um, a repair allowance of five thousand dollars. Uh, for the bell. That's on this project. And um, that should cover. Uh, any repairs. Uh, to that, uh, to that work. Going on to the next. Um, item here. Uh, furnishings, um, I have the appliances. Uh, they were well defined, they were on the schedules, I was able to price that, I added the labor for installation. And I have those costs added in. Again, we're talking about items that uh, that are not yet reflected in the drawings, there are no window shades shown. Uh, but I went ahead and put uh, an allowance of ten thousand dollars just to cover. And. Like, like I said, it may be a little bit more on the conservative side, there is no selection of of shades. Um, and you know, I believe that ten thousand should cover anything if you were to choose something on the on the higher end, of course. Um, if you would like me to shave those numbers a bit, I can, I can definitely bring them down. Uh, to be. To be a little bit more competitive. And then here, we have a fire protection. Um, our senior uh, mechanical cost manager has put this uh, scope of work together, he's priced in a new uh, wet sprinkler. Price uh, piping and all the associated infrastructure. Um, with that, and we've come up with forty one thousand dollars for uh, fire protection.
Uh, before you leave fire protection. Can we get a estimate for a dry pipe? Because the problem I have with the whole thing has to do with. The attic protection and the the ceiling protection uh, in all the rooms, because. If it freezes, heaven help us, I mean, it could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of damage, I mean. Hopefully, an automatic sprinkler alarm, I've done, I've been in the fire department for ten years, so I mean. I've gone to these, um, and so I would. Think it would behoove us, even the NFPA says, if you can't keep it above forty. You know, look at a dry pipe, so could we get a second estimate as to what a dry pipe would be?
Yes, I I can, I can go ahead and get that comparison from him. And uh, and and have that. Moving on to uh, plumbing. Um, again, our uh, mechanical cost estimator has pri- uh, priced in. The mechanical scope of work, the drawings, the water closets, all the fixtures. Um, the roughens, uh, domestic water, cold water, hot water. Um, the piping. Uh, sanitary, uh, waste and vent. Um, and the, you know, the schedule, uh. Schedule forty pipe that goes along with that. And. Moving on to. Moving on to mechanical HVAC. Uh, Ray has priced the air handler unit. Um, he's priced in all the controls. Uh, basically, everything having to do with heating, ventilation, air conditioning. And. These are all his line items for, from duct work to refrigeration to controls. Um, to even uh. Uh, testing and 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 startup. So we've come up with eighty one thousand dollars. For uh, heating, ventilated, ventilation and air conditioning, the mechanical scope. And moving on to electrical, did you have any questions on uh, mechanical?
I know I've talked to Greg on this one once before, but. If you could just, um, if they could provide. Uh, an estimate or actually a calculation to show that. The existing equipment is adequate for the uh, estimated loads in this building. A back of the envelope, I haven't done the formal calculation, you have the back of the envelope calculation. Says that it will not be, um, I did a quick thermal scan of this building the other day. And it doesn't appear as any insulation in the walls. So. Which is. Yeah, I mean, it's an old building, they didn't do that. Um, so that was one thing, and then the other thing was, what does refurbish mean, especially with regard to? Things like the uh, furnaces, I mean, is that just vacuum it out, or is that gonna be new? A new motor or a new hot surface igniter, I mean, whatever, but. Could we just get some detail on what refurbish means, please?
Yes, I I can get that from him. Um, and as far as the, what's existing, uh, we just priced what's in the drawings. Uh, so I don't know what other existing. Um, items that need to be replaced or not. Uh, but we just priced what was in the the scope of work for mechanical, but I'll go ahead and. And uh, tell him or ask Ray if he can um. Uh, more detail what refurbish is in these uh, these line items.
Thank you.
I mean, we did have um, the M E P come and look at the equipment.
Right.
Cuz we had asked whether, you know, it needed to be replaced, um, but. Per his inspection. It it was fine, it could be reused.
Right, I I expected it could be, I mean, I think that it could be reused, I just questioned the adequacy of it for task intended.
Right.
And so. Well, the new addition, my back of the envelope said probably okay, but for this. For this room, if you use the full capacity of this room, room next door. It looked like it may be low, I've gotta really re-run it before. And I can show you my numbers when I'm done. Just to see what it looks like.
Okay.
Um, that was, that was really my big concern, the other concern was, you know, I looked at. To redo the one furnace, it was gonna be, it's budgeted sixty one hundred bucks essentially. And I'm wondering what the cost of new furnace would be. It's in the ten grand range, I mean, when we look at a. Furn- a new furnace, I mean, I'd rather have one with a full warranty on it. You know, maybe more efficiency and the like.
I mean, I understand, um, the units are not very old.
Yeah, they're five years, is what I saw.
So, I mean.
What's the typical lifespan? Fifteen? Fifteen? I'm just looking at the cost and new versus. New versus the refurbished, I mean, and we start to approach the number where you wonder whether or not it's better just to get a new.
I understand, yeah, I see what you mean. I mean, I guess that's a question for the town, whether. They would like.
That's the kind of thing they want to get real numbers from a real contractor, will have a better feel for those kinds of trade offs.
So, okay, well, thank you.
Moving to electrical. Um, I have here. Entire electrical scope for the project. Um, you know, we've got the. We've got power and distribution. Um, some of that includes demo. Um, we've got uh, the equipment. Equipment feeders. We've got our lighting package, and these are all. I guess the light fixtures of the project. When it comes to the whole value engineering, this is another uh, big category that I like to uh, tap into. Um, there's usually some savings here, if um, if needed. Uh, just to change uh, light fixture types.
We're gonna do this for those for their.
Switches and lighting controls, receptacles. Um, our electrical estimator has uh. Put together all the details. Um, and quantified all the. Outlets, outlet types, switch types, and they're all here. And the total for electrical is a hundred and ten thousand. And now moving to um. Another portion of electrical, but we've, we've. We call it electronic safety and security, uh, division twenty eight, which carries the fire alarm. And the audio visual and security uh, portion of the work. And the audio visual and security uh portion of the work. Um, fire alarm has been uh priced. Um, and audio visual, we're actually carrying uh an allowance from uh from a quote received. And I think it was just rounded up to a hundred thousand dollars, but it's very close. I think it's like ninety five or ninety seven thousand. And um. Uh, the total for electronic safety and security division twenty eight comes to a hundred and almost a hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, and this, this quote or this uh category of audio visual. Um, is also a a deduct. Um, alternate as well if it needs to be removed from the estimate, and that's at the. Uh, page, I guess thirty one. Um, where we delete that item, let's say if uh if uh. If you decided to contract that directly, um rather than. Uh, having this bundled up in the, in the general contractor's scope of work. Um, and also having this deduct alternate. Uh, you're also um removing the cost of overhead and profit that you'd pay for the, for the general contractor. Just to mention. And. Moving to uh site preparation. Got the cost to remove some trees, uh mobilization of equipment. We've got a construction entrance, sediment erosion control, tree protection for what's existing. Um, there's some minor regrading and there's some minor regrading also with um just backfilling where the foundation walls are. Which are covered in here as well. Uh, so site preparation, we have around thirty thousand, thirty one thousand dollars. And. Another category within the site would be the site improvements. Um, we've put together uh pricing for uh flagstone paving assembly. Um, we've included the PVC trash enclosure. Um, and this here is a, is a, a decent sized allowance to cover. All the stucco, um, and whatever finish that the uh. The unfinished design of the stairs and ramp area. Um, and I've covered uh. The, the railings as well, which are not shown in the drawings. So these are all areas that are very conservative allowances. Um, the drawings have not cut up, caught up to uh these costs. But um they are very conservative and I can kind of. You know, bring them to a a more competitive uh price if need be. And the total for site improvements is eighty thousand dollars. And moving on to.
Does that include the landscaping allowance of twenty two thousand?
No.
No.
No, the landscaping has been removed. It's a, it's a landscaping allowance and you can add that in. In there by going to the second to last page. Um, and I believe it's uh. Twenty thousand dollars approximately, and that includes the landscaping and any uh, any sprinkler system. That, that may be needed. So, um, I've also included the irrigation as well, uh just in case. And. Moving to site utilities. Um, site mechanical, Ray has covered. Um, he's got everything from the water line, the sewer line, gas line. Um, all covered. Uh, there is another item that is in the ad alternates about the fire line. And I'll, I'll discuss that when I, when I get there. And uh. Uh, looking at site electrical, um, there were no real exterior lighting. Um, items to price, and so we just went ahead and put an eight thousand dollar allowance just to cover. You know, moving to the CD set, if there were some. Exterior lamps um added, then uh then there's money uh to cover that. And. This, this contains the end of the base bid estimate. Um, and this, this is the project total. Uh, right here, and then I'll, I'll continue on to uh to the allowances. Or the add, sorry, the add alternates or deduct alternates. So, um, here in green, I have the add alternates. And then here in red, I have the deduct alternates. So, uh, just so you're aware, um, these items do have direct costs. And then they also have uh the markup costs. So those percentages that we saw on the recap sheet. Are part of these total, total cost including markups. So that would be the supervision. So let's say. Um, the crawl space liner is by uh, uh by the, I guess waterproofing company. And they have a price of twenty one thousand dollars. Well, they'll, there would be a markup for the general contractors. Um, overhead and profit. And insurance, uh bonding and that line item. Um, so that increases their, their price. So if we add this direct cost, we also have to add the markups. Associated with it and, and the same goes for the deduct alternates. Um, the line items that are built in, you know. Also have removing the uh, the markups as well. So I have these listed here. Add alternate one is the crawl space liner. Uh, we have the landscaping, which also includes some uh. Some sprinklers uh if needed. Um, add alternate three is just adding uh one ceiling mounted heater, electric heater. And then our deduct alternates include uh the hazmat demolition. Sorry, hazmat demolition asbestos and lead uh removal allowance. Um, so we can go ahead and remove these items from the, from the estimate if need be. We've. We've got low voltage AV and security per proposal. That's the hundred thousand dollars uh that we rounded to. Um, carrying that item in the estimate, we could remove that as well. And then, of course, the deduct alternate three is um, is what I was talking about in regards to uh the site utilities. And that would be um. Keeping the existing hydrant and bringing the FDC uh closer to the property line. And we have that cost as well. Uh, these would be the breakdowns. There's not much breakdowns on the add alternates. But uh, when it comes to. When it comes to deduct alternate three, we have to delete the option one, which is the base, which is installing a new fire hydrant. We'd have to deduct the base and then we'd have to add. Uh, option two, which is keeping the existing hydrant, bringing the FDC closer to the property line. And. If you remove option, uh, option one, it's, it's a lot greater if you. If you add option two, um, we still have a deduct of ten thou- of close to eleven thousand dollars. So this is the math behind uh, behind uh deduct alternate three in terms of scope. And adding, adding the two items together and getting our deduct uh number. And then here is the totals page. Um, do you have any questions regarding the add alternates or deduct alternates?
Any questions? I think we want to keep page thirty two open for discussion later, but. All right, well, we appreciate the detail. And. It particular- particularly gives us a certain comfort, comfort level with. With respect to the um. Aggregate numbers as well. All right, do we have anything further with respect to? Um, hearing from either Wideman Architects or the. Estimator?
Decision about the.
That's, that's next up. Okay, so.
Is, is there anything asked of us regarding the cost?
Um, yes, I mean, we, we have it. We asked for it and we just need to decide what to do with it. But I think while we have the people here who can speak to. Any further questions we have? Okay. Uh, the next item is a determination on whether we go with a standpipe or a new. Hydrant. And uh, Gabby, while you're here. What is the timeline in terms of how soon you need to know our views on that?
I'm not sure, um.
Well, it's on for tonight, so that implies you need to know soon. Is that correct?
That would be helpful.
Okay, that, that's good. All right, shall we move then on to the alternatives? The, the last page. Of the estimates gives the financial aspects. The um. Memorandum from. Barb gives the alternates and the options and what some of the. Um, implications of each of those are. Barb, did you want to summarize that or should we just assume we read your memo, which I think was pretty?
Well, for anyone who's listening, I can just be very brief. So, um, there are a number of constraints that impact how we handle the fire department connection. Um, so option one is to install a new hydrant. We're indicated on the fire access plan. Um, it has to be the height, there has to be a hydrant within a hundred and feet, hundred feet of the fire department connection. So that's option one. Option two is to install what is referred to as a freestanding fire department connection. Um, there's one of these in front of Penn Place and I gave, provided you with a picture of that. For a number of reasons, um, if you decide to go the freestanding fire department connection route, it would need to be near the memorial stone. Um, there is a gas line in the vicinity, so that sort of, that pushes the freestanding FDC south of the walkway. Um, as mentioned, we need to be within a hundred feet of the hydrant. Of the existing hydrant, and we also need to be at least ten feet from the sewer line. Um, so basically there is a cost difference between the two approaches, um. Including markups of fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty seven dollars. Um, some of the considerations you might want to um. Consider beyond prices that obviously anytime there's a hydrant. There are restrictions in terms of how close you can be to a hydrant park. Um, the other aspect, um. Is that we're spending a lot of money to restore the historic street facade, and perhaps this is just me. Um, somehow a hydrant seems a little outside of the, the view of the facade to me, at least. Then the freestanding fire department connection. Um, you may view it differently and not consider the freestanding fire department connection in any way as diminishing the street view of the building. Um, but it, the FDC would be in a fairly prominent location on the lawn.
Where exactly would the hydrant be? Is that, is it?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's very tiny.
It's circle, right, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where all the little lines converge.
Correct.
Yeah, right. It roughly where the um first. No parking sign would be, I would think, right where the curb cut is, give or take.
But would it remove more parking from?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be like a, yeah.
So. And I just questioned, we should be able to some extent. Other plant flowers around the FDC connection. I mean, we can't cover FDC connection sign. We obviously can't cover the inlet. But, I mean, we could plant flowers, paint it gray, do something or another. To kind of make it look a little more. Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think it has, I think.
Yes, and it's less expensive.
Yeah, you do have to have the red sign. I don't know what the visibility is, but it's supposed to be.
It'd be.
Visibly signed, so that there's no doubt there it is.
And that, yeah, I agree a hundred percent. That's what I was saying. I mean, we couldn't. We have to use the same style red sign. It has to be visible.
Yeah, and I think.
Just thinking that the rest of it, maybe we could disguise it slightly to make it.
Blend in a little.
Blend in a tad more.
Yes, well, under Maryland code, you're prohibited from parking within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant. I had to remind myself. I haven't taken the driver's test in a while.
So there are no parking restrictions for the FDC location?
No.
Well, it would be opposite the space that's already no.
Correct.
Right.
The FDC seems like a perfectly reasonable choice.
I would agree.
I would agree.
Okay.
FDC's freestanding one.
It saves money, is that correct? Have I interpreted that right? Albeit not very much in the grand scheme of things and. And it preserves a parking space.
Right.
Yes.
The cost, the cost is, it's unattractive, and I think we are actually pretty limited. In the way we could disguise it. Um, it might be easier if we could move it closer to one of the other corners, but we can't.
Right.
It has to be front and center.
It'll be like in front of Penn Place.
Right. Picture on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's the consensus of the council that we direct Wideman to proceed with an FDC connection. Rather than a new hydrant. Is that, is that correct? I need, I need, uh, John, what do you think?
I would agree with that assessment, Mayor. I would agree with the way that you've characterized it, yeah. I, I don't see, unless, again, unless there's some utility that we're losing. Um, I don't, I, I, I see the, you know, for me, the FDC near the property line seems prudent.
It's ugly, but in time you look past these.
Work on that mess.
A number of times.
Okay, Greg and Adam, thank you very much and Gabby as well.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
What, what, so what's the next step? I mean, when, when there's more complete set of drawings, is another round?
Yeah, currently, um, we have not contracted for another um round of cost estimates with CCS. Um, that is something you can talk about at a future meeting. Um, Greg did give me a cost for that. Um, and that's not uncommon to do a series of cost estimates as you get closer to bidding.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Um, we're running nearly an hour behind. So let me just now.
Thank you, Adam.
Uh, the next order of business is, is a uh public hearing. On the demolition application for. One one zero one zero Montrose Avenue. We have. In our packet, a copy of the application. Um, and. The report of the Historic Preservation Committee. The applicant is here. Do you wish to make a presentation?
Yeah, Jeff, if you can go to the mic, cause there are, thank you.
I was wanting to let you know uh who we are. Midlanix has been around for uh since nineteen seventy nine. I, I actually the came from Tulsa in January. And uh sold my business there, so I had a building company there for twenty years and. Tried retiring for two and a half years. It didn't work, so.
I get your name, by the way, please.
Uh, Jeff, start over there.
Jeff, okay, thanks.
Anyway, I wanted to let you know just uh, in, in, it's in our DNA to try to cooperate and be. Uh, you know, uh, work harmonious with the neighborhood, so. Um, if you see anything during the building project process that just annoys you, uh, we don't ignore our phone. Uh, pick up the call, pick up the phone, give us a call. We look forward to working in the neighborhood.
Have you built anything in Garrett Park?
We have not built anything in Garrett Park.
The uh, the sketch that's on some of the real estate websites, how closely. What, what's, is that based on anything you all have put together? Or is that just?
We've, we have in-house architecture and uh.
Okay, so that's based on the current.
That's, that's, that's what we're planning on doing.
Okay, okay.
How big is the lot?
Oh geez, I don't have that on the top of my head.
Yes, I think eighty one hundred square feet. I think. Don't quote me, but.
There has been some concern expressed about the potential for trees coming down with the driveway and some other. Um, parts of this project, not, none that would necessarily impact a demolition permit, but.
Totally get it. We're, uh, the trees on the back, we're, we're doing a, a tier retaining wall. Our, our goal is to not take trees down if we don't have to. Uh, there is a tree on the back left. If you look at the back, it's pretty hollow. Uh, that looks like it might just come down, cause it's, it's, it doesn't look good. Uh, so we have concerns on the stability of that. We're getting an opinion on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, as far as how we, how we go about things, we, we, right before we do things, we get a survey. We put protection fencing up. We're cognizant of neighbors' concerns. I know there's a neighbor that has a concern with flowers on the left side, I believe. And and our, our intention is not to disturb that, be careful. We don't like trash. You know, it's not only bad for you, if we have a trashy, bad-looking build, it's bad for our reputation. So we, we try to keep on the guise to get clean. We're not perfect, but we will do everything we can to make things right.
What are you planning to build?
Pardon?
How many square feet or how many bedrooms and bathrooms are you going to driveway?
Five, five bedroom garage is set back in the back a little bit behind the house.
Yeah.
So it has a driveway back to there. The, I think on the plans, it had the over 1,000 some square feet, basement included, but that has been reduced. Montgomery County wants the basement reduced a little bit, so we're responding to their comments. The outside's not changing at all, so that's some, some basement thing. I think it's been being with low threes when we do their adjustments.
We got a report through the Historic Preservation Committee that the neighbor is concerned about the protection of their tulip poplar during the driveway.
That's what I was.
I'm sorry.
That's what I was referring to is her concern on that. So we put a, it's a cell fence with like a wire structure to it, so it's a sturdy cell fence. And we'll do that along the perimeter of that to, to make sure people don't go there. But, and that's done before we, before we start. So we're going to do things to try to protect that. Common, common issues, just so you know, that people panic on is, is the overdig process with the basement. So when you first dig a basement, it's bigger, and everybody's going to say, hey, the, the basement's too big. And, but that has to be done with a forent, and then we fill back that in after the waterproofing. So that is a common thing that when you go into neighborhoods that, when people walk around, somebody in this office is going to give a call probably about that. But I was, had you, get you prepared for that one.
Well, I was just continuing on that. The committee was interested in interior and exterior photographs prior to the.
They emailed me the person, I, I got that email before I got here. I'm planning on responding.
So you all are coordinating.
Yeah, we had no problem with that. We'll, we'll meet them there, get them in there for whatever photography you want.
Are there any fixtures inside or materials that, in your opinion, might be salvageable?
It's in pretty bad shape.
Okay.
So we are not planning on keeping anything with that. But, you know, if you go, if we're looking at pictures and you guys want something, it's fine with me. If you guys take it, I don't have to haul it off, so. But what, when we get in those pictures, I have no problem if you want something.
Barb, I've got a question for you. I'm looking at the, both the permit application and the Historic Pres response. And Historic Pres says it's not in historic district, yet the permit application.
I saw that too.
It is.
Yes. It is not in historic district, however, it's in some kind of overlap district, which is of having, that I don't quite understand.
It's in, it's in the National Register.
It's in the National Register.
That doesn't, that doesn't affect this, this consideration.
Okay, thanks.
Anything further from the council? We don't seem to have anyone else here. Thank you for coming forward.
Brother issues, if you guys need testing and remediation people, I can just give you some contacts. That's easy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Do I have anything else?
No, you can, we, we vote on it now, but, but, but it's sort of, it's sort of a foregone conclusion, but. Barb, you are actually down as handling the next item, which is a vote on the demolition permit application.
Yeah, I don't think there's a lot to add, as the mayor noted. You know, the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee by code has the opportunity to weigh in on any demolition permits for a house or an accessory building in excess of 400 square feet. They did provide a statement that's included in your agenda packet. I did just, well, not directly related to the demolition application before you this evening. I did want to let you know that the chair of the Garrett Park Land use Advisory Committee has reviewed the permit application for construction of the new home on the site, and he advised that no variance is required, that the proposed work does conform with the town code provisions. We also, our engineering firm has also reviewed the driveway permit application. That is also in order to be issued. Obviously, we, we held up on doing so, and, and Mr. Starkbrother was aware of this until after tonight's vote on the demolition application.
I will entertain a motion to grant the application for demolition of the structure at 1101 Montrose Avenue. Do I hear such a motion? Second?
Second.
And is there any discretion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Contrary minded? John, did you get on the record?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Awesome.
Why don't we take a three or four minute break? That meet with everyone's approval? Let's resume. The next item is adoption of the Parks Committee ordinance. Barb?
Very briefly, at your last meeting, when you introduced the ordinance, you had asked for the motion to introduce was based on a slight modification to the language about membership, basically consolidating two sentences. The version before you tonight for adoption obviously incorporates that change since it was part of your motion at your last meeting. So currently, it reads, every effort should be made to ensure that the committee's membership has geographic representation and reflects the diverse users of the town's parks and open spaces, including families with young children, teenagers, adults, seniors, and pet owners. So that was the modification you made as part of the motion to introduce. So unless anyone sees anything else new in this, it should be primed and ready for your adoption this evening.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-6 as introduced on August 11?
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
All right, and moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We massaged the language pretty well, I think, but if anyone has any.
I'll just say that as the first chair of Garrett Parks Parks Committee in the past, I'm very excited that we're finally making this a standing permanent committee. Congratulations.
Yeah.
So we'll move to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Barb, do you want to set the?
Yeah.
Stage for this next one?
Yeah, so you've had three separate discussions about an ordinance that would amend the street code, which as a reminder is section 701 through 719 of the town code. Your most recent discussion took place in August. At that time, the town council deferred introduction of the ordinance to provide an opportunity for the Arboretum Committee to review the current language and provide feedback. The last committee review occurred before your discussions actually started, and clearly, there's been a lot of changes along the way. Included in your agenda packet is the version of the, in attachment one, this is the version of the ordinance that was given to the Arboretum Committee to review. Also included as attachment one is the feedback that the Arboretum Committee provided on that draft version. And with very few exceptions, I did incorporate the suggestions of the Arboretum Committee. The only ones that I did not do, there were certain language that was suggested to be, I guess, a little bit more informal, if that's the right word for it. Obviously, the town code stylistically is not at all informal, so I did not make those revisions that the committee had recommended. There was a section that I just wanted to note in the Arboretum Committee's comments. This is on the, if you look at the very last page of, of what I have marked as attachment one, it's attachment one in red, and it's the full subsection D. There was a slight, I was asked to make two very minor edits by the mayor the day of the committee's meeting. One of those changes was that, if you look at the sentence about halfway down, it says, if pruning is necessary to accommodate a private project or interest, the committee had the pruning must be performed by a contractor approved by the town. The last version that I gave to the committee was that the pruning must be performed by the town, and that was Mayor Keller's suggestion, I think, recognizing that that could either be done by a town contractor with the resident who had the private project paying us. It could be perhaps our maintenance team might be able to do the pruning, or perhaps the town arborist. So I just wanted to clarify, I did leave the language in the ordinance that is before you for introduction to read, the pruning must be performed by the town, not what the committee had in this version. The committee had also suggested that the sentence that is in attachment two, which is the ordinance before you for introduction this evening, they kind of split the sentence that said, the pruning must be performed by, in our language, by the town and may be conditioned upon the payment of cost. They split that into two sentences. I did not make that change because the two things are, are related to one another. The only instance where there would be a cost is if it is tied to a private project or interest. So I did leave that sentence as originally worded, not splitting it into two. Hopefully, that makes sense. If you see, are you looking at attachment two, Geraldine?
Yes.
The committee had suggested, if you look at page three of the ordinance, D, which is at the top, right now, the sentence reads, if pruning is necessary to accommodate a private project or interest, the pruning must be performed by the town and may be conditioned upon the payment of the cost or such other conditions as may be deemed necessary by the town. The committee basically would have recommended taking that sentence and, where it says must be performed by the town, period. Pruning may be conditioned upon the payment of the cost. I left it together because the only instance where a resident would pay for pruning is if it is tied to a private project or interest. And I believe, Geraldine, I think you had, I believe it was you, and I apologize if I'm not remembering correctly. We had added the sentence after the last meeting, the very last sentence, which was in the version that the Arboretum Committee reviewed. If the town arborist determines that pruning is necessary to address the health of the tree or safety or similar concern, no such conditions would be imposed. I believe, Geraldine, it was you who wanted us to clarify that we're not asking residents to pay for routine pruning of a town tree. That is part of our, just our general arboretum management. So that last sentence was, was added since sure, last discussion.
Is, does it create any issue if, at the time of, this comes up, we don't have an acting town arborist?
Oh, we do have a town arborist who's a consultant.
Well, I know you right now, but. Does that become problematic in any way?
We would, we would contract with somebody to basically review.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's part of our management framework for the arboretum.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
An arborist.
And each of, each is, yeah, and each of the tree service companies that we have actually has our arborist on staff, yes.
All right, I'm just, I'm unclear, and I'm looking at red print attachment two, the bottom of page two, 716C. Are we keeping or striking in the second line or a contractor approved by the town? Since being performed by the town, it seems to me subsumes either the maintenance staff or one of the approved contractors.
Right, I don't think it's necessary. It's okay to leave it in, but I don't think it's necessary.
So strike or a contractor approved by the town?
Yeah.
Right, it's unnecessary.
All right, well, let's, to get this on the table, do I hear a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number 20-25-7, amending the street code?
I'll make a motion, a motion to introduce ordinance 2025-7.
And I'll second.
All right. So discussion, I've already suggested that we should strike that one clause in 716C. Is there agreement that we could do that?
Yes. I'm agreeing.
Yes, I'm agreeing.
All right.
Is there any other discussion?
I am still having trouble with the concept of town-planted shrubbery.
Yeah.
And I know we discussed this at the Arboretum meeting, and the only change they ended up making was removing pruning from that. Oh, I'm sorry, so looking at number two.
Yeah.
716 two on page two.
716A two.
Right. So, I mean, I think most of us are pretty comfortable with, with that this would protect shrubbery on town parcels. But I'm still struggling a little bit with the concept of why it's really necessary for the planting strips, which I believe are defined as the right of way that's adjacent to residential properties. Correct. I'm just concerned that this gives the impression that we're, still gives the impression that we're restricting homeowners from managing the shrubbery in front of their homes.
That's correct. That's what this says.
No. I, I don't see why we can't just limit it to the town parcel and leave out the planting strip element.
The only planting strip I could see, I'm just bringing this up, is the one in front of the pool.
Isn't that a town parcel?
Yeah, I guess you could call, I mean.
I, I mean, I thought the distinction between the two was that the planting strips were in front of residential properties and sure, parcels were distinctly town parcels. But I'm not sure that I'm.
No, that makes.
Perfectly honest.
That makes sense.
Well, we struck right away from the definition.
From, from the definition of.
Definition of town parcel.
I think, Geraldine, to your point, if you go back and you look at the definition of planting strip, it says, areas shall mean those strips of land in town rights of way which are not paved for vehicular use and which lie between the paved portion of said streets and adjacent private property lines. So in front of the pool would be still a public property line, wouldn't it?
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Yeah.
Forgot about that.
I mean, I think the, the cases where, the cases where there are plantings that would be defined as shrubs that are in front of, or in the planting strips in front of residential properties, that the town would be wanting to concern itself with preserving are pretty rare.
Like Vicki in front of her house, Vicki, you know, where the labretth is going.
Vicki Bailey?
Yeah, Vicki Bailey, she's got a lot of plants, shrubs that she's planted in the right of way. Big elephant ear shrubs and all that, and she maintains all that. I mean, I don't think we want our town people to be responsible for all that.
Well, we, we all maintain things in, in the right of way.
Sure.
How would this in any way inhibit that?
I guess it's the definition of a planting strip. But as long as it's clear that we're not talking about the right of way in front of people's houses, then that's, that's enough.
But the distinction would be town-owned, right?
And what does that mean? I mean, I.
Or town-planted, I guess.
How would the person know?
Unless you're an old timer, you probably wouldn't.
Yep, by the attorney that says, well, we should have a list.
And, and we do. And it's being, so for example, the hollies that were planted in the town planting strip at the corner of Raleigh and Cambria. Arboretums are in the database because they were put in at the point at which the Arboretum Committee and the town were being more. the Arboretum Committee and the town were being more conscientious about making sure that even shrubs were put in. The osmanthus, which exists in the planting strip right at the northeast corner here, Kennelworth and... Kennelworth and, no, no, Kennelworth and Strathmore are not, because they were planted long enough ago that the town did not put shrubs in its database. That is being corrected, those are being added.
Do we have a definition of a planting strip, Harv?
Yes.
That is, "Areas shall mean those strips of land in town rights-of-way which are not paved for vehicular use and which lie between the paved portion of said streets and adjacent private property lines."
It's the yellow highlighted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And town parcel, just as a reminder, is defined as real property. Well, it would be defined as this, real property owned or controlled by the town, including but not limited to town parks, public recreation areas, open spaces, deeded conservation parcels, outlots, or other green spaces not privately owned.
Well, I mean, I'll add to, to your list, Chris. I believe that there, there is a special maple that is, I'm not sure if it's defined as a tree. In front of Barbara Scheider's.
It's a tree, it's in the database, and it always has been.
But I think it's a shrub.
Absolutely.
Size.
Absolutely.
So I recognize that, but even still, I think for the average resident, this is a very confusing provision and very difficult for the town to enforce, and so that's what concerns me. Most, I mean, you know, and, and the committee did get feedback. They noted it in Sean's notes that he shared, that they got feedback that people were concerned that the town was going to limit people from managing the shrubbery in front of...
Their house.
Yeah, and the planting strips in front of their homes.
Okay. Well, and language changes were made to remove that possibility. So, how do, how do we control what people think?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a tough one. But I mean, what is the risk? Have we seen, do we, do we see a lot of damage to special shrubbery? Is this actually a risk worth us legislating to protect?
Well, that's another question. But there are valuable, valuable, worthwhile plantings that the town has done in planting strips.
And we don't want the people who live in front of those shrubs to be able to trim them. Because this says they can't break, wound, destroy, remove, in any manner injure any of the shrubbery planted by the town or which may here and after be planted by the town on any town parcel or in any planting strip.
Right, and you removed, you removed prune last time so that if Jason goes out and prunes some of the osmanthus,
Then it's not a problem.
It won't be a violation. If he removes it, it will be.
This says he can't break it, wound it, destroy it, or remove it, or in any manner injure any type of shrubbery.
Yeah.
Okay. So you think that that is not including trimming shrubs in front of your house?
Oh, you've removed prune for the specific purpose of allowing that.
Okay. Okay.
The way, I didn't understand your point, Lisa, because the way it's written, it's like so all-encompassing.
Right.
As soon as I put a pair of snippers to even a piece, I wounded it.
It's a lot of words, break, wound, destroy.
Okay. You, you understand the background of this is Ordinance Number Four, which had, which had all of this language and had it applied to both trees and shrubs. And what we've done here is break it out and kept prune with respect to trees and taken it out with respect to shrubs by putting them in two separate sections that read ever so slightly differently.
Right, although I do believe that in, at some point when we were considering this ordinance, we had removed shrubbery from the consideration, and now we've brought it back in.
That's right, that's stricken. A one is essentially Ordinance Number Four. So we struck shrubbery.
But it also includes the word prune.
That's right, because it applies to town trees.
Right.
You say struck shrubbery and pulled down a whole new section that just applies to shrubbery.
Right.
And, and does not incorporate pruning.
Right.
Would, adding some language to say, I'm just making something up, but to say something like, prune, minor pruning is allowed, or something to that effect, work?
I can almost hear Ron Bolt saying, "What's minor?"
Yeah, I know.
Injure, in any manner injure any of the shrubberies planted by the town.
Why not just leave it at remove? You can't remove a shrub.
Right.
In front of your...
Yeah, but I could see somebody just cutting the thing flat. And they're just like, "I didn't remove it, but..."
Remove or destroy.
Yeah.
Right.
That's fine with me.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, pruning, is pruning breaking? You know, like cutting?
Right, yeah.
That's kind of vague, but like, it's either destroyed or it's removed.
Yeah.
Right, we got, we can't destroy or remove shrub in the planting strip.
Okay, you want to strike break?
Yes.
Wound?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it would be just destroy or...
Insert, insert or after destroy?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
And leave remove.
And then remove?
Yeah.
Comma, or in any manner injure?
I don't think we need in any manner injure.
Yeah, because that could mean anything.
Right.
Great.
I'm still struggling with, how does a resident know that the shrubbery in front of their house was planted by the town? Because how would they know? Unless we send a letter to anyone?
Well, they planted, we planted it.
Right, but how would you know? I just buy a house and it has shrubbery in front, I don't know who planted the shrubbery.
That's true.
I mean, this is a concept that, you know, with the trees, we work pretty hard to educate people about the tree.
Plaque on them.
But it's a, yeah, I mean, they have the little tags, but it's...
I think if we just say, "You can't destroy it or remove it if it's in front of your house," then that's enough.
But, you know, the, the concern I'm having with this is the inconsistency. I'm throwing a percentage out here, eighty percent of the shrubbery in front of people's homes is in the planting strip, and it is not, I think, falling into this category of, category of town-planted shrubbery.
Right.
So Chris listed maybe four examples, I added one that's actually a tree, and I don't know how we would enforce this against anyone.
But as long as they're not destroying it or removing it, isn't that all we care about?
Right, but, okay.
You're gonna...
Eighty, eighty percent of the people who have a shrub in front of their house are allowed to remove that shrub.
If it's in the plant, if it's in the right-of-way?
Yeah, this is saying if it was town-planted.
Okay, then I don't know.
Exactly. That's my concern, I just think this particular paragraph is confusing and unenforceable, and I'm not sure it really...
Those are two different things.
But it's both.
You can, you can fix the confusing part by redrafting.
I think the concept is unenforceable and confusing.
Jerilee, are you only talking about the planting strip? I'm just trying to clarify.
Free paragraph. Number two.
Number two.
I just don't think it's necessary.
What I might be getting at is, but, but specific to plantings. In other words, if we...
If someone...
Focused on town parcels.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
You can't remove or destroy any shrubbery on a town parcel.
Right, the town parcel part, I have no problem with that. It's the planting strip portion that I think is unfair to homeowners because, other than those few cases, which if we're really concerned about those few cases, we should just go on an education campaign with those particular homeowners, and we should always make a point of making sure a letter is sent to those homeowners when the property turns over, that, "Hey, you have a special shrub in front of your house that the town planted, and we'd appreciate it if you would..."
Don't remove it or destroy it.
Right, don't remove it, rather than making it a, an ordinance to protect five or six pieces of shrubbery around town in front of people's houses. So it's just a planting strip part that bothers me. I don't think it's fair to homeowners, because it gives the impression that no one can remove shrubs in front of their house, when in fact they can, except for maybe five inches. Right, and we do want them to, because we don't want the town to take that.
So you just want to strike "or in any planting strip"?
That's what I would, well, in addition to the...
Stuff we already...
Change we already made.
Right.
I think destroy or remove is really what we're after.
I'm fine with that, I mean, makes some sense.
Chris, I know there are these few special cases, but I think we can deal with those.
Is it that few?
It sounds like it's a pretty few. The, the few cases that are actually town-managed shrubs on planting strips versus town parcels.
In right-of-way.
It's a handful, right?
It is now. It might be useful to have that ability in the future to offer homeowners a sort of a trade-off if you remove that. Because right now, homeowners resist, for example, removing great stands of, of bush on the cycle.
Well, aren't those invasive and we want them removed?
Exactly.
Well, we had that fight with the people who live, Show Walker, about her bamboo in front of the street. She didn't want us to take the bamboo away. Carolyn Show Walker.
And if, for example, at the Harboryes, it's, it's a yuwanus that grows into the roadway at a sharp corner. So there's sightline issues, there are all kinds of issues. They don't want to lose the screening. So we said, "Well, what if we plant these hollies in from that, so it doesn't affect the sightlines? It gives you the screening." And they were amenable to that. So the town has planted on its own right-of-way, just as it does a tree, some shrubs to achieve an end, but then we can remove and have begun removing the yuwanus, which pose sightline issues and so on and so forth.
And the Harboryes to be able to prune, do holly shrubs, or are staff...
Not, not particularly, but we've moved beyond pruning. I think that's a useful template to use in other instances. But if the town does not contain, maintain control over any aspect other than removal, destruction or removal, there may not be much of an incentive for the town to do that.
I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, I think the town could still work in these individual cases, one-on-one with homeowners, without necessarily having to have it be part of an ordinance that gives the impression that we're legislating shrubs in all planting strips. That's my concern, it gives the impression that every bush in front of every house is legislated here. It's hard to explain to residents. And it seems like we could manage those cases better through the kind of conversations that led to those hollies being planted in the first place.
I mean, we could always put it back, right?
Those conversations could still take place, it's the preservation of it that this addresses.
Understood, but again, so there was an arrangement, they agreed to the planting of the hollies. Most likely, they'll become at risk when that property turns over. And the real work of avoiding, preserving that is educating the next owners, which really has nothing to do with threatening them with this ordinance. It's more about someone reaching out and saying, "Hey, you're the new owner. We wanted you to know that the planting here is actually in the town right-of-way, and it's purposeful for these reasons." That's going to be far more effective than us putting in an ordinance that they can't destroy the bush in front of their house, and that's something that actually only applies to say...
Takes the question, who does that? But I gather you don't want this.
I'm just suggesting we take out an in-planting strip.
Okay.
And just end the period after town parcel.
Could you add on, could you remove? And put a period up after town parcel? And then say, "This protection is also extended to, you know, certain town pla," like, if it's, if it's, if it's only a few, a number that could also grow, could there be a provision added that kind of notes that there are instances on planting strips where this may apply, or like... I mean, I don't see any other, it, it either gets removed or you have to specify specifically which ones.
Can we tag them, by the way?
You can try, but it's really hard to make a tag on a small shrub.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
I think those are all tagged, but over time, the tag will probably disappear.
Sure. Unless you could put a post next to it, I guess. Drive a rod in the ground, I don't know if you could get away with that, but drive a rod in the ground with a tag on it.
We could just say...
Otherwise, I'd get rid of it.
This really relates only to anything that the town has planted, that they can't remove it or destroy it, or any shrub re-planted by the town, period. And then just have that being the end of it.
Can you even say residents are encouraged to...
Didn't say anything.
Contact the town?
No.
For clarification?
But they wouldn't even know, because they would think it's theirs, it's in front of the house, that's where Jerilee's coming from. It's like, you buy this house, a bunch of shrubbery in front, little do you know that one particular bush...
And can't destroy it, remove it, that's all.
Well, that's what I mean, is you're encouraging them to like, just check in with the town.
Destroy it without the town's prior written approval.
Right, well, and the thing is, you know, with the trees, and actually, I think our language here on the town-planted trees, a resident brought to my attention, I think several, all of us got that email ahead of time, that in A, seven sixteen A one, protection of town-planted trees, the language itself in the paragraph doesn't talk about town-planted trees. Just the title does, and the fact is, the town has adopted any tree.
Town-planted trees.
Right, but the, the trees in the, in the planting strips are all town trees, and they're all protected, they get tagged, they're put in the database, they're protected, it doesn't really matter who planted.
They're on town land.
Okay.
Right.
Right, and, and from that perspective, it's really easy, it was a lot easier, shouldn't say it's easy. It's a lot easier to educate and explain to people, all the trees in front of your house that are in the right-of-way are managed by the town. The part that bothers me about the shrubbery provision is that it's very selective to a few shrubbery, and so that's very confusing for residents.
Well, as long as it's not destroyed or removed, I don't know that, why do we care? I mean, aren't we just trying to protect the shrubs?
But we're not trying to protect all shrubs. We're just trying to protect a few, apparently.
And you're trying to clarify it by basically taking out planting strip because it's a lot easier.
You don't want to say right-of-way?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that to the extent we're legislating this, let's focus on the town parcels, and then charge our town maintenance crew and the arborist with, or whoever is appropriate, with education for those particular parcels where we have... those particular parcels where we have shrubbery that are special or planted for particular reasons by the town. That's, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, and well, we need.
The idea to say, you have to get the prior written approval by the town?
It's still the same thing.
If you wanna remove it or destroy it.
You don't know that the town owns it particularly. What, but I think what, you could reach out to the town. Hey, I got a shrub in front of my house, I wanna get rid of it.
Well, we've never done that before, we've never told people that if they have a bush in front of their house that they wanna remove, that they have to go through the town to do that. Is the town really prepared to, to manage that kind of landscaping discussion with every resident? I don't really think we are.
I don't know why we care.
Well, we care at corners because of safety, sightline issues, and there's a separate, separate ordinance on that.
Okay.
And frankly, there are parts of town that at least it used to be until we made an effort to address it, where if there was sufficient overgrowth from shrubs largely bush honeysuckle in the right of way, not necessarily to corner, but any place where there are no sidewalks. And you had that condition on both sides of the street, there was not room for two cars plus, plus, no, not visibility, just available space.
Impeding the right of way.
And we have nothing on that.
But isn't that, wouldn't that fall under just the town's maintenance of?
I agree.
We should be, we should.
Shrubbery in the right of way, we could put the town reserves the right to maintain shrubbery in the planting.
Well, no, we don't wanna maintain every single.
But if we're aware of.
The right to trim.
Excuse me, if I may, there is a provision in the code already, in no case shall the unpaved street area of any town street be landscaped in any manner that will inhibit or impede pedestrian use of a five foot wide walkway sidewalk or pathway, blah, blah, blah. So there already is language in the code. Yeah, and we have approached residents when we see that there's problems, asking them to turn back and, and in accordance with that section of the code.
So maybe we don't need this at all then, maybe that's enough.
So, just my, my suggestions for these two paragraphs would be to remove the or in any planting strip and also the, the break wound
Right.
part. And then on the first paragraph, A one, I think it should just be protection of town trees instead of town planted trees.
That makes sense.
And, and then I, I just encourage the town to reach out to those homeowners through letters where we are particularly concerned about protecting certain shrubbery. I think that will be more effective than putting something in the ordinance that.
Well, I can see you or someone on the committee, once this is adopted in whatever form it is, you know, write a piece for the Bugle, share it on the list serve and just sort of say, you know, here's what we're, we encourage you to do this and if
Yes.
you have questions, do this, and if it's trees.
And I will say, I mean,
Don't do anything.
The committee didn't spend a lot of time on this particular one, and I have to admit, I didn't really focus on it until I read it again afterwards, but I don't think the committee really sees themselves as responsible for shrubbery, they see themselves as responsible for trees.
Okay, so we're striking?
Town planted or.
The, the hyphen, the hyphen planted in A one, we're striking two in its entirety.
No, no, just striking break wound, adding an or between destroy or remove and striking or in any planting strip.
Gerald, can I just?
Putting a period after town parcel, period after town.
Charlie, can I just double check, so what you're proposing is that protection of town planted shrubbery, no person shall destroy or remove any of the shrubbery planted by the town or which may here and af- hereafter be planted by the town on any town parcel, period. Do I have that right? Okay.
Yep.
All right, and in C we are striking or a contractor approved by the town.
Correct.
In the first full sentence.
I did get one other, well, I think we all did. Get a town resident comment about the, the, I don't know if it was about the tree removal request or the pruning, that it seemed like it might seem a little bureaucratic.
It was Ken, Ken, yeah.
Pinchforks, sitting in front of us. Um, I think it was the tree removal point, that if a tree, and I'm not sure if there's a language fix here, I was thinking about whether we could easily or elegantly address it. If, if a tree is obviously dead in front of your house or a branch has split off and it looks dangerous, you're going to just call the town, you shouldn't have to submit a written request.
And they don't.
And you don't, right.
This is, this is where Ken actually had this situation.
Yes.
A town tree is in very bad shape adjacent to his home. And he phones in. In fact, the town removed it, but say the town said, hell no. We're gonna wait another year and see if it doesn't bounce back. Which is what we did last year and this year it didn't bounce back. So, so if the town says that, then he should be able to come to the council and say, I want it removed anyway. It's ugly as sin, it detracts from the value of my house.
It could fall on the, on my roof.
And the council can say, sure, and you pay for it. That's what that provision provides. Or the situation at the Graffshimes when the sidewalk was being put in. There are other situations where the town, at least initially, says no. We're not gonna treat this in the usual fashion, which is you phone the town office or you run into a council member or the mayor or Phil Normandy on the street and you say, that's a big dead limb right over my driveway.
Exactly.
And it gets done.
Right.
So these are the situations, dead limb was a bad example.
We couldn't, what, what about, could we consider at the very beginning, right after the title, tree removal request? We add in a sentence that any resident may bring to the attention of the town tree, tree, safety concerns, tree deaths by, through a simple phone call. And then you move on to, if any person and I thought the committee was recommending seeks to remove instead of applies to remove, because it seems a little odd that you jump right to applies to remove. Because what we're trying to address here is the interest of a person to get rid of a tree. So that, that would be my suggestion is that we just add in a, a sentence that, you know, concerns about the health or safety of a tree may be brought to the attention of the town at any time.
But who doesn't already know that?
Yeah.
I mean, this it seems to me is the reverse of the thing with shrubbery, where everyone assumes one thing, and now you're assuming.
To do it, I, I do think it's fairly common sense, but I think the concern raised was that this gives the impression that you have to make an application if all you want to do is point out to the town the tree in front of your house is dead.
It says you've gotta get the explicit written consent of the town council. And number B, in seven one, section seven one five B, the town council may delegate all or part of this responsibility to the town management clerk, maintenance treasury, treasurer.
Right.
Wasn't, I mean, how extensive is the form? Could just be, here's my address, here's the tree and here's the issues I see. Right, and now there's a log.
Have to ask the town for written consent.
Am I looking at the?
I mean, I think we can
Am I looking at the wrong one?
Communication, advertise that, hey, you know, um, the town manager puts Bugle notes out every month. If we don't want to add that clarification, I'm okay with it. As, as long as we make it clearly known and the town staff are not um, managing it in a bureaucratic way that, oh, you, you've noticed a, a tree lint fell, please fill out this form. You know, calling should be sufficient, that's the message we want to get out there. So if everybody's comfortable that this language is really just for those unusual cases of the the homeowner who has a desire to get rid of a tree that might be otherwise healthy. I do think the, starting it off with the applies to remove is, just doesn't quite make sense to me, I think the committee was recommending seeks to remove right there. I thought that's what they had.
Number D.
So you need it on.
Instead of applies to remove, seeks to remove. And then we say submit a written request, that's the application.
And you also submit a request for an assessment, you're not sure, tree's not looking great. You don't know, you're not saying remove it, just I wanna make sure it's not gonna fall on the car.
That's the point, they have a safety concern, they can notify the town at any time.
The arborist.
Right, oh, I see, right. This is just for those two.
I guess a question, do we even need, I mean, given the comments you've made, do we even need B, or do you just wanna delete it?
Oh, but, but don't we need it?
Well, there's a section that, I mean, I think we'd have to amend the language in C where it talks about if an application under seven sixteen B. I, I've, I've never sensed that residents don't know how to express a tree concern if they have it, they call, they send emails, I mean, I mean, I think the, the, the language, I think, is, we've been through a lot of twists and turns with this, so my memory may be faulty, but I think the issue with C is simply that we're, we're going to do all the tree removals, if, I'll give an example, there was someone who, and I, I don't believe we did this in this case, um, cuz I don't think that was the process at the time. They wanted to remove a tree because of a private project. In my mind, that's probably where you want someone to basically contribute. Um, so perhaps the language in, at the bottom of page two, C should somewhat mirror the language of the pruning in the sense that we're trying to differentiate between we don't want anyone removing our trees, we'll be the one to do it, and if it, there's certain circumstances that are necessitating the tree's removal that are essentially to accommodate a private project. The person, the party might either have to pay for the tree's removal or pay, pay into the tree fund or something like that, if it's a young enough tree. I think that's what we're, where we're trying to get with C, and I think that begs the question whether we even need to direct people how to make a tree removal request. I leave that to you all, of course.
You could streamline it considerably, as you say, um, you might need to add a sentence under C to replace that if an application.
Right.
But sure, I think keeping this simpler may be beneficial.
And then we're saying to our residents, if you don't do it, it's gonna cost you a thousand dollars. Number E.
Well, the point of tonight is to introduce this, get it out there, give, it, it seems like it's a lot of work right now to actually remove B and, um, try to amend C to add it in tonight, when it's almost ten thirty. I would suggest maybe leaving it and just.
Playing with the language.
Yeah, the one part that I know the committee was a little concerned about jumping right to applies to remove, they thought it seemed more appropriate that, you know, if a person seeks to remove a tree or to have a tree removed.
Okay, well, are, are you proposing to?
Kind of keeping it simple and just making that smaller to be wrapped with trying to amend C, which is like more effort right now.
And under D, on page three, pruning requests, it seems to me we can ta- strike manager, clerk, treasurer, just say, she'll notify the town. That's what most people do anyway, they stop Frank. Dylan.
Sure, agreed with the town.
Without going through a long series of formal amendments, are we propose, are we prepared to introduce this?
I think I was, um, hanging with the Gerald Lee until the last one, so if we remove B in its entirety, then there's a reference to that in the, in the following section that needs to be addressed.
Suggesting that.
Introduce it.
Of introducing it, leave B, but replace applies with seeks.
For now, okay.
I just think it's too late to try and with any.
I, I, I agree with you.
I, so if we could circulate the, the language with the draft minutes, we don't, we don't usually do that, but I'm proposing that we do that this time.
So are we introducing this evening with certain amendments or not? I'm, I'm sorry, I think I just missed this step.
So that we're all clear on what we're doing?
Yeah, I believe the changes that I've heard are under si- seven sixteen one, the hyphen planted would be removed. On number, um, seven sixteen A two would read, no person shall destroy or remove any of the shrubbery planted by the town or which may hereafter be planted by the town on any town parcel.
Period.
Period. In B, uh, the only change would be if instead of applies, the verb seeks would be inserted in seven sixteen C, the language that, um, second, second and third line, what would be stricken is or a contractor approved by the town would be eliminated. And I believe that's everything you talked about, is that correct?
Uh, on D, D is in David.
Yes.
Third line, first three words, strike manager, clerk, treasurer.
Just notify the town.
Okay.
That was awesome, Barbara.
Got it?
All right, thank you. With those changes, shall we vote introduction?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
All in favor of introducing proposed ordinance number twenty twenty five dash seven, amending the street code, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good.
Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, the fee and bond schedule. Barbara?
Sure, so you all, um, this is called a fairly similar process, um, in terms of review by the Arboretum Committee. Um, you've only had one discussion of this item which occurred at, um, your meeting in August. Adoption of the resolution was deferred to give the Arboretum Committee an opportunity to review the draft and provide some feedback. In attachment one, um, is the copy of the resolution and the fee and bond schedule that was provided to the Arboretum Committee, also included in attachment one, um, were the Arboretum Committee's comments. One of their, um, suggestions was that we compile a list of recently issued permits. Went back a little bit over two years when we went, um, changed our website platform to revise, we did create an online um, permit application form, which makes it very easy to capture data. Um, it would be much more time consuming to go back and to try to, um, we could certainly do it, but I certainly couldn't have done it by, by the time the agenda packet went out, uh, because it was a very manual process. Um, there were paper applications emailed in and things like that. Um, so included in attachment two is a list of the permits that have been issued um, from the time we moved to the online permitting platform in July of twenty twenty three through, through August. Um, probably the information that's probably, um, of most interest to you is just to see sort of the permit breakdowns to see how things would apply, um, there were a total of fifty one permits that were issued during the time period I just mentioned. I'm not sure this is particularly helpful, but, um, forty two were filed by owner applicants, nine were filed by contractors on behalf of property owners. There were four accessory building permits, four building additions, six deck, decks or porches, three demolitions, twelve, um, driveway parking pads or curb cuts, three new residences, two stoops, one swimming. three new residences, two stoops, one swimming pool. A very large number of our permits are just, you know, reviewing fences for right-of-way encroachments and writing the letter that goes to the county. Um, and then there was one variance permit. So I think just as you kind of consider the fee and bond resolution, I know there were some comments made at your last meeting, as well as in the Arboretum Committee feedback, of kind of trying to assess how the various, the right-of-way restoration bond or the tree protection bond, how those would kind of land in terms of residence. And hopefully this data, even though it's not the full five years the Arboretum Committee was hoping for, at least it gives you some idea of how those, how the different proposed fees and bonds would be applied to those permits. So included in your agenda packet, it's attachment three, is the current version of the resolution for your consideration for possible adoption. As you know, it would update our current fee schedule to establish a required performance bond or other surety for certain permit categories. The right-of-way restoration bond piece was based on how the county handles things. So the Department of Permitting Services at Montgomery County has a bond calculator. We tried to align our permit categories with theirs to come up with the proposed restoration of town right-of-way bond sureties. The county does have a minimum right-of-way restoration bond of a one thousand dollars. There's been a lot of discussion, you know, in terms of the part of potential tree, town trees that would be impacted by construction activity. So the resolution that is provided as attachment three does incorporate the suggestions of the Arboretum Committee. I did want to just bring to your attention that since the Arboretum Committee, I have added some notes that would be at the, and this would be part of the resolution, at the bottom of the fee and bond schedule part, as well as the required bond surety for each of the trees that was covered by a tree protection plan. Many of, we, we do break several things into different permits. So we'll just think of Mr. Starkweather, who was here this evening, his company, which is the property owner, you know, will be issued probably by the end of this week, a demolition permit letter from the town that they will submit to the county, a new home construction town permit, as well as a driveway installation permit. The intent of the, the, the notes that were added since the Arboretum Committee is, as I thought about it in this instance, if there is one town tree, and I'll just pick one of the larger ones that has a value of an assigned bond or surety amount of ten thousand dollars. I do not believe it, based on the discussion I heard last month, that the intent would be to take that one town tree and require someone to post a ten thousand dollar bond or surety because we choose to issue three separate permits for those activities. Otherwise, what we would be doing is having someone post a thirty thousand dollar bond. And I don't think that's the intent. I'm not saying that the language I've given you perhaps is the best, but it was my attempt to try to clarify that we're not going to bond the same tree three times over. On the right-of-way restoration bond, the same scenario is the most likely one that would occur in this instance. And once again, I'll use the Mid-Atlantic Building Site on, on Montrose. The highest right-of-way restoration bond would be the five thousand for a new residence. And that is the highest right-of-way restoration bond that the county would assess, at least that aligns with our permit category. What is before you would suggest that in the case of, I'm just going to use, once again, Mid-Atlantic Builders, because that's the most common scenario where you'd have multiple permits for essentially work occurring almost at the same time. They would post a five thousand dollar right-of-way restoration bond, is what is proposed. And you, you may or may not agree with that, but that's the, the intent to try to clarify in the notes how we would, in those very limited circumstances, calculate the bond that would be posted.
Could you say that last point one more time?
Yeah, so I'm, like I say, this happens very, very rarely. It's generally going to be where a, a home has either been torn, is being torn down and a new home constructed. We do permit driveways separately, because they're reviewed by different parties. So in this scenario where there is a demolition, demolition permit, a driveway permit and a new residence permit, for the right-of-way restoration piece only, they would post the five thousand dollar bond, as opposed to posting a ninety-three hundred dollar right-of-way restoration bond. Because that would far exceed anything that the county would likely have someone do.
Okay.
And then the only other comment I guess I just wanted to make is there is an attachment four that is included for this agenda item. Typically, the way that, I guess anytime that you're basically having a bond, there is typically something akin to a bond contract, which would govern, outline and govern the circumstances under which a bond would be forfeited. This was my interpretation of reading the Arboretum Committee's feedback, which may or may not be correct. And this is just an issue that you all have not discussed. As I read the Arboretum Committee's comment, that if there is a single violation of an approved tree protection plan, that that would result in the forfeiture of the posted bond in its entirety. Whether that is what the Arboretum Committee was proposing wasn't entirely clear. And this is not an issue that you all have yet discussed.
Barb, I think this attachment number three, safe harmless, the town, and I think you should put in there Garrett Park instead of.
Oh, this was actually, this is an actual, um, oh, this is actually the town of Chevy Chase's, their actual bond, bond form that they have people sign. That's up to you all, but we, there should, there definitely should be a bond form if you adopt, whenever you adopt this resolution. It needs to be very clear under what would be considered a default. That would result in a forfeiture, and that could be a single failure to comply with the tree protection plan. I did just want to note that in the Arboretum Committee's comments, they're referring to a, a builder. It is not necessarily going to be, not everyone's going to have a builder or a contractor who is posting the bond. There, I think, I can very easily envision for some small projects, that it may be the resident who posts the bond. The example we were kind of talking about in the office last week, my husband and I replaced our driveway number, when we first moved into our current home. Double width driveway, concrete, one of the longest ones in our subdivision. But I don't, you know, if you, if I had one town tree, if my, my home were in Garrett Park and I had one mature tree, the bond strictly for the tree protection would be almost equal to the value of what we paid for our driveway project. And I guess my point being is, I'm not sure you're going to find a driveway contractor who is going to post a bond and have their money tied up when that bond may, may exceed the actual total value of their contract. So in that instance, I can envision circum, that's going to be a very individual discussion between the property owner and who they're hiring. But I would not automatically assume that it's going to be the contractor whose bond is at risk. It could be that if the homeowner has to post the bond, and we're saying that a single violation of a tree protection plan triggers the forfeiture of that bond, I just want to be sure everyone recognizes that the person who may be forfeiting the bond is the resident.
The contractor does the damage.
It's very possible. So I think that's going to be a very individual conversation that each resident is going to need to have with their contractor. But I think contractors are generally very protective of their own money, in my experience. You know, and I think of something like a simple driveway project. We had contractors on our property for, you know, roughly four days in which work was occurring. You know, we weren't at home when that work was being done. There was no reason for us to be home while someone was demolishing our driveway. So I, I think that's just something to consider. Obviously, I can't speak to what every single property owner and what their contractor would, would or would not be willing to do. But I think just recognize that if it's the resident posting the bond, then they would be the ones responsible for ultimately whether the tree protection plan is violated or not, unless they have some other side arrangement with their contractor. So this is just a difficult situation to navigate. I wish I had better insights for you, but I don't.
Did Ron Bolt weigh in on this, or am I thinking of a fine?
He had provided some comments that I shared with you under a legal and confidential.
Right.
Stamp, yes. One of his comments, which obviously is just kind of common practice, I don't think it's particularly a legal consideration, is that there does need to be some type of bond contract akin to what the town of Chevy Chase. He was the one who gave me that as an example. So we would have a starting point, but ultimately I think it's a matter of policy in terms of what, what you deem to be a significant enough violation to trigger the bond default.
So what happens if there's a tree protection plan, but the tree still dies, so she can scream?
I think, yeah, I think the difficult part with trees is often what's, and I, I certainly don't have much of a green thumb, that my dad was a forestry major. You know, trees can get stressed, but they, they can take some time to really die from something that happens. And it's very difficult to, this is one of the things, you know, Ron and I talked about at one point in time. You know, you, you can't hold someone's bond in perpetuity to try to figure, like, how long do you wait to see?
Right.
If their action caused.
Like the truck backs in to the tree, like.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the things that I can see, like we had one instance, which actually wasn't even our right-of-way. So we had, the state, quite frankly, didn't care, this was a new home construction on Strathmore. When they were putting their driveway in, there was like too much asphalt close to tree roots. Did contact the new owner, I mean, I notified the state because technically it was a violation of their right-of-way, because there was no permit. Truthfully, the state could have cared less. I contacted the property owner and their contractor and they, you know, hand chiseled out the, the extra asphalt. Yeah, it's, you know, storage, if someone will dump a bunch of storage materials on the tree roots.
And that's the tree protection plan area and keep it stayed.
You know. It can be hard because you also.
It still might die.
Well, I know, well, and it, yeah, and I know with your house, you know, any general contractor is going to have a lot of subs running around. So I think we have gotten better of specifying certain types of fencing, trying to have signs on the, the fences, you know, not to be taken down.
The tree.
It can still die.
Still die because the roots are far beyond.
Right.
Protection.
Yeah.
Right. And, and the, the Arboretum Committee did discuss this point, and their recommendation was that you, you determine returning the bond based on whether they followed the tree protection plan.
Right.
Rather than a tree dying.
Right.
Tied to the health of the tree. That may not be apparent right away.
Right. Right.
But I, I don't think there, the committee's intent was that, because I, I saw either in the email or in the notes here, the concern that it, there is going to be some judgment and there, there does have to be, the town has to somehow enforce this. If, you know, if, if there's a concern or a report that the tree protection plan is not being followed, we have to come up with some procedures.
Right.
We do.
Is it going to be one time and that's it, you don't get your bond? Or, you know, we have some follow-on procedures if we're going to do that.
We. It's a good question, right now there isn't. I mean, I think, Jerry Lee, to your point, I think one of the things that occurred to me is we just, you know, and I, Phil Normandy can't be in all places at all times. And so, you know, and you can't do, and selective enforcement is problematic legally. I'm not a lawyer, but that much I do know. So we do have to kind of have a systematic process of how we are enforcing active construction sites. And I don't think that can be solely Phil Normandy, because he's not here all the time. So some of that is, you know, Kayla and I being sensitized to that, talking to the maintenance staff who is out in the field and is more likely to see something probably than any of us, because they're, always are out and about. And just.
Potential to become a legal, like something that plays out in court, so that would change.
Yeah, it, I mean, I think it just.
It needs to be documented.
Correct, I mean, yeah, I mean, on the right-of-way part of it, it's, it's easier because we will go out and take video and photographs of the condition of the right-of-way before construction starts. And at the end, it has to look exactly like it did. You know, trees are harder. It really is about ma, you know, doing everything we can to make sure that the tree protection measures are understood and clear and enforced. And as Jerry Lee alluded to, having a systematic process of inspecting those sites that are active. So I think there is just a kind of a, you know, is it a one-strike-you're-out, you know? And that, there is some judgment, but certainly I think the one thing I can say is, you know, and I can certainly work with the town attorney, but I think knowing kind of where you, how you want those lines to be drawn and making sure that that gets translated into the bond contract, which could read exactly like the town of Chevy Chase's does, for the most part, or it could be different than that. And I think that's where your judgment comes into play.
Barbara, I, I don't know if you've had time to even check, since the attorney provided Chevy Chase's bond contract, would it be worthwhile to check in with Chevy Chase to see if they would be willing to share any procedures they're using to?
Sure.
Manage theirs?
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Now, I see this as cash performance bond, but there's other sureties.
But there are.
Most people are just going to put up the money. I mean, to go get a bond from a bonding company for these little amounts is kind of ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, I, I reached out to our, our branch manager at the depository bank that the town uses, and unfortunately I didn't hear back from him before this evening. But, you know, if you go out on the county website, they've got like these, you know, pre-approved templates for letters of credit and things. Ron Bolton and I briefly talked about that, and he said, well, every bank may kind of have its own kind of form. Jason Azar had just made a passing comment, because obviously, most of us are seeing the bonds on the other side. You know, we're seeing, like, we got one from our road and sidewalk contractor. Jason Azar doubts that it would probably be cost efficient for, that he said a bank may not even issue a really small letter of credit, to Lisa's point. You know, where that amount comes, because typically we're getting fairly large letters of credit when we require them for construction projects.
Okay.
Are we prepared to vote on this?
No.
Well, why not?
Well, we don't have procedures and.
No, we can implement procedures.
We can put those together. I mean, I think what would be,
when.
You know, help, yeah, helpful to know is.
The only, the only question I would have then is based on what the scenario you described about a driveway. Which is the only project here that could, I guess, I would imagine would be potentially cost less than the actual bond amount.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing I can think of.
Should that be lower, or is it?
Yeah.
It'll be on the resident and the contractor to figure out who's going to pay.
It's an interesting question, because I would say if you look at the right-of-way restoration bonds, there's a reason why the county and we are proposing the same thing as the staff, that a driveway is one of the higher right-of-way restoration bonds, because that's where, that's, that's where you're digging. I mean, everything is happening around there. I think the only other instance I can think of, so things that would come under like an accessory structure. You know, that can, that can be a shed, that can be, it was a, you know, someone did a really cool treehouse for their kids that we consider to be an accessory structure. But if you look at everything else at this point on the tree side of it, most of them are going to be in the, in the higher category.
So irritated if I have to do this when I put a shed in.
Anyway. Okay, well, if we pass this tonight, it's not an ordinance, goes into effect immediately, and when the.
It does or does not?
Does.
It would go into effect immediately.
So, what was his name, Mr. Fuller, when he comes for his demolition permit tomorrow?
Oh, Mr. Starkweather?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about Mr. Starkweather?
The, the Montrose.
Yes.
What's the name?
Uh, Jeff Starkweather.
There are two town trees there.
There are three. Yes, there are three trees there.
The driveway, the garage.
No, we're just talking about, he, for the.
Yeah, we had looked at this, I had looked at this earlier with, in conjunction with Phil Normandy, there are three trees on that prop, near the, that are, would probably be part of the tree protection plan. I did send Phil. on that prop, near that, that are, would probably be part of the tree protection plan. I did send Phil Normandy a note earlier, just asking him to confirm what he had told me before. Spent some time.
Hire a per, a bond for the driveway?
He would. Yeah. So in their case, if you endorse kind of the thing that we're not going to bond something multiple times over, their bond would be just for the right of way restoration bond. There would be a $5,000 bond that would needed, need to be posted for the right of way restoration piece. I apologize, I don't recall the size of the trees. I think they're on the smaller side, but I was told before. There's a dogwood, a sugar maple, all are young and under 12 inches in diameter is what Phil Normandy said. So I'm just confirming that with them. So they would, before we would issue anything, we would have to put together the, the, the bond contract, for lack of a better way of describing it, because we would want them to post the bond before we give them their town permits, because they need to take their, with the exception of the driveway. I'm assuming, and I mentioned to K O when he talked about getting feedback from DPS, I assume they're kind of going through a consultation process because the county will not process their permits for demolition or for the new home construction until they get a letter from me.
What about for the garage that he's building on the back of the site? Is that an accessory unit or?
Yes, but we, we don't double charge for either the, that's what the, that's what the effect of this note is. Which I, I would like to amend the wording of the note. If the overall project involves concurrent permits, the town will not require. Because it's, and usually they do, but if he waits five months to get a permit for something else.
Sure.
He should, he should have to post the bond for that. So with, with that change.
It's concurrent, does it default to the?
It would default to the highest.
But in the case of a tree with three trees, and let's just say they're over six inches in diameter, that would mean that he's got to post a surety or cash for 30,000.
Yeah. I mean, I would imagine a builder might, would probably have more access to doing letters of credit. They probably have someone they work with, whether they choose to go that route or not.
Sure.
I can't speak to that.
And they get it back as long as the site is restored.
They, they do. We would escrow the funds and. Yeah, someone filed a drive, a resident filed a driveway permit today, so I would need to see what trees are there, but this will, this will apply to their project as well.
Now, does it matter how close the tree is to the work being done?
It's an interesting question. I, I, I defer to Phil Normandy about that. Correct. I mean, I, I think we, we have someone who's, I'm not going to mention the street, but that was one of their concerns because they said the tree we were trying to protect was on the opposite side of their driveway. There is some judgment, I think, on Phil Normandy's part because I mean, we've also learned that where, where construction is supposed to be limited to doesn't always necessarily stay there. When you have people walking all over a, a property doing work. So in that.
There were like stone.
Correct.
Right.
Right. I believe the three trees for the property on Montrose are fairly close together. As I understand it, they're all on the same side of the driveway is what Phil Normandy had told me.
Okay. So there's some flexibility. I'm, I'm just thinking for argument's sake, looking at my driveway work. My driveway is on one side of the property and then on the total other side of the property is where the town trees.
That would probably be very similar to the circumstance I'm mentioning where there probably would be a tree protection plan required and, and the posting of a bond. That's my guess based on.
Even though it's like 50 feet away, it would still be, I mean, I can understand a tree protection. I guess if you got the tree protection.
Protection plan, it triggers the, the posting of the bond.
Bond.
Yeah.
I, I know you explained it and I understood it. I don't see.
I think I lost you somewhere else.
But I, I, I don't see where the resolution or the schedule explains that the bond amounts are per tree. I don't see where that's.
Yeah. So.
It seems like it ought to be.
So the Arboretum Committee had, had suggested, I, I did leave in language saying each town tree.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I left that there. They had suggested taking it out, but I do think it's important that people realize that there can be multiple trees. And it's a per tree bond or surety that is part of the tree protection plan.
Are we prepared to?
We're going to update that after we pass this. Is that the plan?
They can.
Um, I guess I would just ask one question is, you know, I can work with Ron Bolton on this. Obviously he, I'm sure he was felt pretty confident he was involved in drafting this for the town of Chevy Chase. Is it the town council's desire that is the forfeiture of the bond based on kind of a, you know, one strike and you're out? Is it, I, I don't really know how you all want to approach that. So is there any violation of the tree protection plan? Would that result in 100% forfeiture of the bond? I don't have an opinion on it. I'm just asking the question so we can draft the, the bond language.
Well.
Going to decide that.
There seems like a lot of process that's.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, this is going to go into effect immediately and there's permits coming in.
Yeah. At the same time, I would also say that, you know, permits are coming in, but if, if you don't, yeah, if there's, at a minimum. I mean, trees are very important to this town. It's a part of what makes Garrett Park Garrett Park. You know, in the absence of anything, then there's no protection of the right of way and there's no protection of the trees either. So there is a consequence of, of not acting. And I think you all have to kind of balance that.
If you want a graphic example, look at the tree protection that's at 109015 Clermont.
Yeah.
And I think it has to be an all or nothing. I don't think we can begin down the road of subjective judgment whether the tree protection plan has been partially violated. It's just, there's a fence there. It's very substantial. It'll be very evident if it gets backed into. And that's, and that's an abrogation of the tree protection plan.
Yeah.
And. Yeah.
And you all are comfortable putting the pieces in place rather quickly.
I, I think in terms of the only piece we would have to do is, you know, and I can certainly explain that. You know, I suspect that Mid-Atlantic probably isn't going to bat much of an eye. I do think the resident who filed for a parking pad, if they have a substantial tree, will probably be caught off guard a little bit, but I, I, there's no, you know, once you put something in effect, you know, there's never a great time. Someone's going to be surprised at some point or another.
Question.
Yeah.
Who's going to make this determination? My opportunity to appeal, what's that process?
Right. I mean, what.
We just want to be prepared to.
Yeah. What I'll probably, I mean, I would imagine that in terms of, in looking at, yeah, I'll talk to some, I'll talk to my counterpart at the town of Chevy Chase and kind of talk to him. I may even have, I'm trying to think, cause I'd ask people like what they do for right of way restoration bonds. I'll have to see if I can find his real quickly. But, you know, it would certainly reference for the right of way part of it, you know, curbs, gutter streets, driveway aprons. You know, planting signs, things of that nature. I'm not sure, I'm not that familiar with the town of Chevy Chase's. If their trees, you know, if it has more of a protection aspect, like what we're talking about here, or if it's simply, you know, you kill a tree, you put another one in.
So a question similar, if there's three trees, three bonds, but you only hit one tree. Are you losing $30,000 or just $10,000?
It's per tree.
No, it's per tree.
It's per tree. Okay.
Well.
Right.
No, but. Yeah, I think to, I think Phil's point is an excellent one because if the, I'm just going to use some of the examples from the Arboretum Committee. You know, if the fence gets taken down, well, the fence is encompassing all three trees. And arguably that would mean the forfeiture of all bonds.
Right.
Is how I would interpret that.
But if you had a fence in court, just encompass, is there a way where you could fence in one tree at a time? I mean, unless they overlap each other.
Right.
Correct. Yeah. How, most of the ones, I'm trying to think if there's been one, the one over at Clermont Place is a single tree. The one we just, person that just put fencing up over another project, that's a single tree. I don't know if we've had that situation, Phil, that I can think of, that there are multiple trees right now.
Well, I'm thinking of this one that is potentially coming up here shortly. I mean, I don't remember the spacing of the trees, but.
I was trying to see if the one over on, so the, the property that's on Clermont Avenue. I'm trying to see if I can find her permit letter.
Kayla and Barb, did the town get any feedback about this proposal between our last council meeting in August and this month?
I have not either. And I think Jeanette would have told us if she had.
It was August.
Just wait. Feedback might come.
Did the Arboretum Committee take a look at this?
They did.
Okay.
That's attachment two.
Yeah, they gave a little bit of, yeah, their, their comments are here.
I'm sorry.
And gave a little bit of feedback that Barbara incorporated in the, in the language.
Yeah, the property that's over on, on Clermont Avenue, the one that was going to be demolished and now isn't. It's a single tree as well. So I'm not really finding examples off the top of my head of any multiple trees. Except for the one we just talked about. Yeah, but those were, we're not going to post a bond for ourselves. Yeah.
All right. If we're going to adopt this, I need a motion to adopt as circulated.
I like the table until we.
I'm sorry, with the.
With the change of the concurrent.
No, with respect to concurrent permits. Is there such a motion? It's going to die without it. All right. We want to refer this anywhere for further work?
Right. That's a good question. If I may, I apologize, Mayor Keller. Is the hesitation about the tree portion of it, or is it also the right of way restoration bond portion? Okay.
Process.
Yeah, the fact that we don't have a process to support it feels like we're rushing it when we don't actually have a way to implement it. That's.
Right.
I think a lot of the.
We have a process without a resolution to give it any basis? How does that work? It's like establishing fines for something with no law.
Well, we could, we could amend it to change the date of implementation to allow for the process to be developed. That would be another method.
Yeah. I mean, I think the applications we have right now, like you say, one was a driveway that came in, those are usually fairly simple to process. The, the Montrose property, they've had their other ones basically approved for some time. We just haven't issued the letters because of the demolition. So those would probably go forward, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Go forward about the.
Right. And that's why I guess I was asking the question of where, where the specific concern was. Yeah. So those would basically go forward. Without any protection of the right, you know, any protection of the right of way and any protection of the trees. And I just want to make sure that's clear.
And if it's not introduced, it's not adopted now. It resets the clock.
It would just come, I don't think it. Mayor Keller, I don't remember any type of language in the charter specific about resolutions coming back. I only remember ordinance languages that are.
You can.
Yeah. I, I think to the mayor's point, so if, if nothing happens tonight, is what you all are wanting to see when it comes back is, do you want to actually see like what the cash bond would read like? Is that, I just want to make sure we bring back whatever it is you all feel which needed.
Process for telling these people we're not getting that they've lost their $10,000. Who's going to decide that and under what conditions? Is my question.
Okay.
And the other thing would be appeal process. You know, 30,000, it's a lot of money.
Okay.
And the Garrett Park specific contract.
Okay.
Right. Why Chevy Chase uses for their implementation and.
Sure. I'll, I'll talk to him.
The application speed schedule is already in effect, right? It's, it's just here for information.
Yeah. The only one, it's a good question, Mayor. There was one piece that in the application fee. In the ordinance, I'll just refer to it as the building permit ordinance that passed. It was 2025-5. That was passed in June. For the first time, we have as part of a, a new permit was for the freestanding wall. And there's a $75 application fee. We candidly, these don't come in, I think we added some language in consultation with the chair of the land use advisory committee. So that's the only application fee. That would not be charged, but I don't think that's going to be material because we. No, there are not.
Yeah.
We just, basically if someone were to come in, which is highly unlikely, there were just, we would just figure out how to process it.
If, if we're deferring this to next month, the other thing I would request is that we post a listserv notice about the fact that council is considering this resolution and inviting town feedback.
Yeah, that's a good point because most of the discussion has occurred in August when many people were away and. Okay.
All right. So we do not pursue that?
We're pursuing it just a little slower than originally intended.
The town manager's report. Barb?
Yeah, I'm going to be very brief. Not, not much of interest in the financial report. It's very early in the fiscal year. Just wanted to let you all know that back in the latter part of August, I did file a grant application with the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for funding through the community parks and playgrounds program. This is the program that is largely funding the Yendel Park development. The specific project was to re, to replace the playground equipment at the community center. I, I was in touch with both the, our liaison, Robin Daly, as well as the officers of the Garrett Park Nursery School, just as we were moving forward. One of the things I touched base with, with our grant administrator for Montgomery County is whether or not there were any additional points that we got for, if we offer to put money in. Because obviously our lease arrangement with the nursery school is a 50/50 split for playground equipment, which I believe would be very difficult for them to do. He advised that you didn't get any extra credit for putting your own money in it. So I didn't, I did not indicate in the application that we were putting any money in. Not that I'm not, no, it's, it's, it's the playground equipment at the community center. So anyway, grant awards will be announced in May, in May or June of next year because it's for state FY 2027 funding. We had included money in this year's budget to replace the main entry doors to the town office. Those doors are in, if you want to stop by and look at them. I'm hoping this week to get the final construction documents from, from Norton Land Design for Yendel. One of the things that I've talked to Mayor Keller about, and we can certainly delay this to next month if you want, but there are a number. and we can certainly delay this to next month if you want, but, um, there are a number of contractors that both Clark Azar and Norton Land Design are familiar with who have unit-based contracts with either Montgomery County Public Schools, um, Montgomery Parks, in some cases, other counties. I think the, those are all competitively awarded contracts, I think the benefit of going that route as opposed to just, um, you know, widely distributing it on E Maryland, you know, E Maryland Marketplace, getting my things mixed up here. This would be for Yendel is that, um, another governmental entity has already basically competitively awarded these contracts, screened these contractors. Certainly, I think one of the considerations would be to make sure that there's some competition, um, you know, we don't wanna be, so I, you know, basically it was just exploring this, the only documents that I've given were those that were available in the public realm through the mandatory referral process. There were three contractors that between Clark Azar and Norton Land Design and Montgomery Parks, because I did talk to one of their staff members, um, identified as possibilities. I shared the mandatory referral documents, since those are posted on the Montgomery Planning website anyway. Explained that we were trying to gauge whether or not, you know, confirming that they did have unit-based contracts, I know one of them does, because I have a copy of their contract from Montgomery Parks. I guess I just wanted to get a sense from you all, is that something I should still try to pursue as long as there's competition, or would you feel more comfortable just putting it out on E Maryland Marketplace?
People who were contracted, were looking to work with are small, rather than gigantic companies, I mean, I just think it's a little project, so it would be good to have a little local company do the work.
On the other hand, I would say the larger companies, so one of the companies that has a unit-based contract with, um, Montgomery Parks, because like you say, they sent it to me, is DNF Construction. DNF has done a lot of work in Garrett Park and has done really good work. Another one, um, I can remember the gentleman's name, but I can't remember. Both Mike Norton and Jason Azar had worked extensively with them on different projects, um, thought very highly of this company, and then there was a third one. So I, I do take some comfort in, um, you know, companies that have some resources and that either we have firsthand have had some experience with, or at least our consultants have had some experience with. You know, I, I'm waiting to hear from those three, and once again, I've made no commitments to them. You know, it's just that if they looked at the mandatory referral documents, which were not the final construction drawings, because I don't even have those yet. Is this something that they think they would be interested in? So I guess my question for you all, which, like, once again, we can, you know, discuss it next month if you'd like, um, especially given how late it is, but in concept, are you comfortable with that approach if it appears there'll be some competition, or would you rather just put it out on E Maryland Marketplace?
Yeah, it sounds, i- if it seems like you're going to get, um, um, variety of good competition.
Yeah, right now, like I said, I've explored. Yeah, I've explored three of them and, you know, they would still have to fill out our standard, you know, you know, affidavit of non collusion and things like that, but, um, I think it might save some time in the, in the vetting of the firms at the tail end if we've never heard of them before. So that's where that stands. And then everyone probably saw, um, the lamppost and the luminaires arrived finally from, uh, Spring City Traffic Systems got them last Friday, I'm sorry, the week before, the previous Friday. They were able to start installation on Thursday and finished up on Friday. The only downside is that they moved so quickly after everything arrived that there's still a step Pepco has to do. So they're not gonna be operational until Pepco comes and makes a connection to, um, they will be metered. So we did wonder if you all would want us to put something out on, through constant contact, basically saying we know that they're not lighting up right now and there's a reason for it, um, we haven't heard anything, um. Yeah, the only feedback I got from a resident is when I went out on Thursday to talk to one of the construction crew and somebody was walking by and go, they're really pretty, and I was like, thanks. But do you think it would be helpful just to let people know that we understand that there's not a malfunction, that simply we're waiting on a Pepco?
I think that's a great idea, Barb. I think that, any excuse to reach out to folks, I think it's, I think that's.
We can do that, and that's really it for my report. I think Councilmember Deutsch will be reporting on that shortly.
Right now, right?
I think you are up, unless there's any, there's no one finished.
Also try to keep it brief, so, um, I had the opportunity to sit down with the mayor and Barb and get caught up on where things stand with Cambria Field. Partly because I wanted to update POSCO as they start to do some of the work, um, post-survey work, to make some recommendations, and, um, it makes sense to provide that update to you all as well. And, and I thank the mayor and, and Steve Preszkowski, Northside Steve, as I call him, um, for the work done previously to get us to this place. So the Cambria Field is budgeted, um, and as of now, and we'll, I'll talk a little bit, and the mayor can jump in about why this is, but, um, the plan is for the work particularly involving the, um, the grass to begin in the fall of twenty-six, kind of immediately after the pool closes. Right now, the renovation involves removing the baseball backstop, which is rather old and, and not really necessary, could always be added if, uh, if it seems baseball's a sport that's gonna be played there. Increasing the height of the pool fence perpendicular to the train tracks where the volleyball court runs. That fence gets increased, the size of the field gets expanded by moving the fence that runs along the train track slightly towards the tracks.
So we're gonna move the fence or put in a new fence?
Both.
Both, right, is that, um, that fence is in better condition.
Yeah.
Yeah. Planting new grass, which there is some discussion to be had about sod or seed and the timing of that, um, part of what. Grading. And then two relatively new ideas, um, that we're still fleshing out is the possibility of adding a power source, which would allow for a power source to be outside of the pool boundary for things like evening events, screen on the green, beer fest, other activities that go on that might require power, but without having to access the pool, um, and potentially a small shed for sports equipment and other things that, you know, could just be there for kids and others to use. Mayor Keller can talk a little more authoritatively about this, but really setting the conditions for success for this, we, we gotta make sure that the planting of that grass is done at the right time in such a way that it takes root and does not deteriorate rather quickly as we've seen some grass around town do so, and so, Mayor, I don't know if you wanna jump in, but the thought is that if you don't, if you do, if you try to do it before the pool opens and you sod, and, and you sod it, you're not giving it enough time, you're not gonna be able to keep people off it. Pool setup's going on, those fences are open, trucks are driving along there, it's, it, it would be better, more prudent to wait until just after the pool closes, plant in the fall, which is a better time of year. And, and I hope seed to really allow it to take root and be a great field. Well, I don't, I don't know.
Sod is better for instant effect. My entire view of this project is it should be driven by long-term maintenance concerns.
Yeah.
And it's not an irrigated space. You can't rely as much as you used to in terms of predictable rainfall and so on and so forth. And there are now hybrid grasses that were not available twenty-five years, it was twenty-six years ago when this was done the last time, that put down deep roots and are far more drought resistant. They require seed.
And maintenance crew, there'll be some.
I mean, sod, sod by definition is grass that has had ninety percent of its roots cut off. And so it is bred by sod producers to have short, dense roots. We want exactly the opposite.
It's also less expensive to seed. It's less expensive, as I understand.
Oh, uh, yeah, sod is very expensive.
Yeah.
And it's, it's great for lawns, but this is not a lawn, it's an athletic field, it has to stand up to a lot more. So, and then there is the, the, the fact that, uh, if you did it in the spring and there were any delays whatsoever, you'd be interfering with the pool's ability to get at those side gates, which they require for preseason prep. And you'd need to keep kids off it until June? Well, good luck with that, you know, the pool, the pool opens the third week of May and there are big keep off the grass signs, I, I just think it'll, from any number of standpoints, work better. And I'd hope to do that this fall, but, um, it's just, it's not happening. We don't even have a topo map yet.
But it will happen, that'll be great, and kids are using that field.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah.
It's really nice to see.
Do we have any drawings, any stuff yet from Jason or anybody?
Just.
Well, none of the topo, but like what the plans are, I mean, is there gonna be drainage, for example?
I don't think he's that far along, um, I got an email from him and, because he was checking on permitting with the county, um, whether they would let us come in under a small land disturbance permit, which they will. Trying to think what else he had to say. Yeah, I think he had sent a very early sketch some time ago that I'd shared with Mayor Keller, it was quite a while ago. But I haven't asked him for anything recently, so there's nothing right now, Phil.
Okay.
That's a short answer.
And any thought of putting a concrete pad? Like say a eleven by eleven concrete pad? For instance, underneath that tree or closer to that drain away from the pool?
The thought is it would trigger horrendous county permitting requirements. Which, the, the, the delay associated with which is no longer an issue, because it's gonna be delayed anyway, but I still think it's best to stay away from that.
Okay.
What do we need the pad for?
Well, I mean, it'd be good for any, you know, for picnic tables for people who want to sit there without having necessarily a muddy spot. You could, if you wanted to, I guess, prop it, you know, put up like a tent thing over it. It's just to have a nice flat spot. And for if you're handicapped, I mean, it's a little easier to get, roll around on a pad than it's gonna be to.
Well, the hour is late, I'm not sure I want to get into this, if you wanted to do that, you could do something such as it being done at Yandell where grass is seeded over a firm substructure that you can run wheelchairs on and everything else. I just think, uh, impervious surface there is, is going to be difficult in terms of county permitting. I'm sorry, well, yeah, you, you could pick a corner where it wouldn't be that much of an issue, but.
Yeah, it's a great idea, I mean, so we looked at the possibility of doing what you just said, because I know what this stuff is that you plant.
Yeah.
And they use for driveways too.
Have a quick arboretum update.
Very, very quickly, the October meeting date is a federal holiday and it also conflicts with the MML Fall Conference if anyone is inclined to go. And the MML mayors. Is there any sentiment for either moving it or having someone else provide, preside? I have not decided, but I figure we better just talk about it now rather than later. No, it's the fourteenth.
So you'd like to be able to attend the mayor's meeting?
I, I would like to have the flexibility, I haven't decided.
I don't mind moving it. I would not wanna make it earlier, though.
Or one of you could, no, it can't be earlier. It, it, under the charter, it has to be the second Monday or, or after, I think, but, um, or one of you could preside if I decide to go. Do you, so the fundamental question is, you wanna just leave it on the fourteenth?
I'll be out of town.
I mean, sometimes, thirty years ago, we just held conference, I'm sorry, council meetings in October and November, even though they were both federal holidays. We've drifted into deferring the November one. And the question is, do you wanna do the same for October?
The same what?
Deferring.
Defer.
Deferring the meeting.
Just skipping it altogether?
No, 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 no.
Moving it back?
Moving to like the twenty-first, right?
It would be to the twenty-first.
The twentieth.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I'm just, I pulled up my calendar, so the twentieth.
The twentieth is a Monday. I'll still be out of town.
I'm fine. Oh, nice.
That's nice.
You have to stay. Late night for you.
It'll be three in the morning, it'll be almost, almost, almost as late as it is right now, well. Is, is there any consensus one way or the other?
I'm fine with moving it to the twentieth.
Yeah, I'm fine with.
Have you signed a problem for November?
No, we can still use our regular schedule in November. Right. I motion that we move the October meeting to October twentieth.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye. Arboretum update?
Yes.
Very quickly, um, Tree Walk will be Sunday, November second, um, one P M. Starting point TBD to be announced. And then secondly, just to share that Arboretum Committee discussed and has declined to provide, um, recommendations or input on whether the town should adopt a ordinance of some type to regulate leaf blowers in town. They decided that it didn't have enough of an impact for them to make a recommendation. However, they would like to see some, some on the committee would like to see some education on the benefits of keeping at least some leaves on your property instead of moving, removing all of them out of town. And that's it for the arboretum update. Can I ask a quick follow-up? Mayor Keller and I had had a conversation about, you all talked about having residents come and talk to you about your feelings about gas-powered leaf blowers. If the Citizens Association was open to hosting a forum, would you all be receptive to that, or would you rather have people come to a council meeting?
Yeah, Barb, sorry, I, I have an update there, I think Steve has encouraged us to consider just to, to, to not have an actual meeting, but, you know, maybe circulate some sort of poll, um, he, you know, certainly it's, it's up to us, but he feels that that's.
Better.
Yeah, that, that.
Okay, thank you.
Do, do in the poll or, 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 you know, just make a decision on our end, I mean, we've got the four, sorry, I should have probably mentioned this to, to take ten seconds on the counter. But, you know, of those four, um, cases, Barb, that you, um, laid out so well, you know, maybe either we, we do what we did with POSCO, or, you know, we just, we, we make a decision, but, but Steve just thinks that, you know, having a, having a separate meeting there, he would, he would just encourage us to kinda move it forward in the absence of, of that.
I thought we got it down to two cases, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's one or the other, yep.
Right.
Phil's right. It's a, it's a.
Are you all okay with that? Kayla will be doing all the work, but.
He just voluntold you, right?
Yeah, um, I mean, is that something you want us to?
I believe last time we decided we would not entertain opting into the entire.
That's what I, my understanding was either status quo or opting only into that portion of the noise ordinance that governs gas-powered leaf blowers.
Correct.
I think it might be best to publicize our desire to hear from people in a rather open-ended session context rather than a poll.
I agree. I agree, give people a window, say we want to hear from you, send us your thoughts.
I heard last time that our residents are suffering poll fatigue.
Good to know.
More fundamentally, it simply doesn't, it, it simply constrains.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
All right, is there anything further? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye, thanks everyone.
Thank you for hanging in there.